Swing around junior real quick.
The House will come to order. Members, please take their seats. Sergeant at arms.
The House is now in session. All persons not entitled to the privilege of the floor, please retire to the gallery.
The members will rise and be led in prayer by Bishop Daniel Robertson Jr., Mount Gilead, Full Gospel International Ministries Richmond, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America, which will be led in the delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Let us pray. Lord, Thou hast been our dwelling place throughout all generations. Before the mountains were brought forth, or ever Thou hast formed the earth and the world, even from everlasting to everlasting, Thou art God. We come to you today, no matter what our background is, or what we believe, we all know that we need a higher power, that we need somebody to guide us, we need somebody to lead us. So Father, we are praying in this session on today, that you would hold our hand. We need your help. We are dealing with difficult things, we are dealing with things that will affect a lot of people. We don't want to be selfish, we don't want to be into ourselves. So Lord, we are asking you to hold our hand. Guide us, lead us, direct us. We ask you to be with the Chairman in a very special way. Um, God, we just thank you in advance for helping us to represent the several places that we are over, and God, we are just grateful and we are thankful, and we pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen.
The members will answer the roll call by indicating their presence on the electronic voting board. The clerk will close the roll.
Madam Speaker, a quorum is present.
Pursuant to House Rule 3, I have examined and approved the Journal of the House of Delegates for Wednesday, January 29, 2020. Motions and resolutions under Rule 39 pursuant to Rule 40 are now in order. The clerk shall announce the first morning hour order of business, including any clerk's announcements and communications.
First morning hour order of business. The Speaker requests members to use their Request to Speak buttons to be recognized. I have no announcements.
The delegate from Henrico, Delegate Bagby.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate Bagby, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today's invocation was given by Bishop Daniel Robertson Jr., Senior Pastor of Mount Gilead Full Gospel International Ministries. Bishop Robertson holds a Masters of Divinity from the Samuel Doitt Proctor School of Theology and a Doctorate Degree in Divinity. Since becoming pastor, Bishop Robertson's style of preaching and motivating his congregation has attracted worshipers from all over, and Mount Gilead has grown from 25 members to more than 4,000 ministry partners today. Bishop Robertson is not only a prolific preacher and motivator, but an author as well. His powerful words have pushed those under his tutelage to go beyond what they could ever imagine. Additionally, Bishop Robertson actively participates in international missions and ministries, which has carried him across the world spreading the gospel of Jesus Christ. I thank God for the powerful messenger and ask that this body give Bishop Daniel Robertson Jr. and his ministry partners a warm House welcome. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Welcome, Bishop Robertson. Thank you for joining us, sharing with us this morning, and enjoy your day on Capitol Square, and best of luck with your ministries. Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate McQuinn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam Speaker and members of the General Assembly, this afternoon I have the honor and the privilege of introducing a group of young people from Virginia Union University. I'm going to ask them to stand at this time. These are individuals from Virginia Union University who have been working diligently and have been in the district, I mean, in the district, at the Capitol today, just meeting individuals and talking to them about some of the issues that they are concerned about. They have been researching housing discrimination and eviction within central Virginia. They are here today and they're led by Housing Attorney Darryl L. Haycock of the Virginia Poverty Law Center. The students chose, came into my office to, and asking that we would just chaperone them around the House because of their dedication and how they are working so hard to make a difference in this Commonwealth. They have taken on many, many, taken on an agenda that would affect the lives of many, many people in a positive way, and I would ask that you would join me in giving them a warm welcome today to the Capitol. Thank you.
It's great to see the students here from Virginia Union University, and thank you for what you're doing, your advocacy on so many important issues. Enjoy your day today. The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, I rise for a motion.
Delegate Simon, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, after speaking with the patron, House Bill 524 on page 31 of the calendar, his memory of what happened at full committee was that bill was intended to be reported and referred to appropriations, but it's made it to the calendar today, and so with the patron's permission, I would move that this House Bill 524 on page 31 be referred to the Committee on Appropriations.
Shall HB 524 be referred to the Committee on Appropriations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? 524, HB 524 will be referred to appropriations. Delegate from Hampton, Delegate Mugler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate Mugler, you have the floor.
We have with us today a delegation from Thomas Nelson Community College. If they are in the gallery, if they would please stand. Thomas Nelson Community College is the fifth largest of Virginia's community colleges and serves Hampton, Newport News, Picousen, Williamsburg, and the counties of James City and York. Currently, over 11,500 are benefiting from the High Caliber Associate Degree and Certificate programs that the college offers to prepare them for university transfer and direct entry into careers. Thomas Nelson also serves over 4,200 students with workforce training programs and services. The college offers classes at its two campuses, the Southeast Higher Education Center in Newport News, three workforce development centers, the Center for Building and Construction Trades in Hampton, and at various instructional sites within the community and online. Thomas Nelson's delegation visiting today includes interim President Greg DeCincio, students representing the Student Government Association, and Thomas Nelson Center for Building and Construction Trades, along with the college board members, Mr. Michael Coons and Mr. Jonathan Romero, representing the city of Hampton. We also have Vice President for Institutional Advancement, Ms. Cynthia Callaway, and Thomas Nelson Police Chief Kevin Maxwell. Oh, I would certainly like to ask for a warm House welcome.
Welcome to those from Thomas Nelson's Community College. I hope you enjoy your day on Capitol Square. The delegate from Hanover, Delegate Fowler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate Fowler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, visiting with us today in the gallery, we have the great folks from the DePaul Community Resources Developmental Disability Advocates, along with the Arc of Virginia, visiting with us from all across the Commonwealth today to educate their representatives on developmental disability waivers and the unique, unique needs of individuals with intellectual as well as developmental disabilities. DePaul Community Resources is a nonprofit human services organization serving central and southwest Virginia. Their mission is to support personal choice, promote individual growth, increase social inclusion to improve quality of life for individuals who have a developmental disability. They accomplish this through serving individuals in the community in sponsored residential homes, group homes, and day support programs. DePaul's vision is hope and belonging for every Virginian, and they believe that the work of hope and belonging is bigger than social work. It is work that builds communities, strengthens economies, supports health, and renews promise. I hope the members of the body will join me in giving our visitors a warm House welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome to those of DePaul Community Resources and the Arc, and thank you for your advocacy on behalf of ID and DD waivers and so many important vulnerable populations. Enjoy your day today. The delegate from Fairfax County, Delegate Kriesek.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Kriesek, you have the floor.
The VRTA, the Virginia Retired Teachers Association, I think they're, they're around the Capitol. I know they have to get going by 1 o'clock, so they may have already left, but I hope that they will watch this on video. Oh, they're here, they're here, they are, they are up there. Thanks for standing. They're an organization of about 6,000 retired teachers and non-professional school personnel. Their motto is to serve, not to be served. And let me tell you, these teachers have not stopped helping their students. They, in the last five years alone, 80 to 83 units across the state have contributed approximately $567,425 in scholarships to graduating high school seniors. In addition, they've documented over a million hours in voluntary services to the community and with youth. So that, if you think about it, that's really like around $24 million worth of donated time and money. And the hours they represent, it's just a small fraction of what Virginia retired teachers actually contribute across the state in the areas of health and community organizations. And I want to say, yesterday, I was personally surprised to see one of my former teachers testifying in appropriations, and I haven't seen him since high school, and that was really a treat, and we got to talk and catch up. So that, the teachers are still out there working hard even after they've retired. So there's a, tomorrow is a big day too. It's the, it's the Retired Teachers Day here in Virginia, and that's something that we passed in 1996, a resolution recognizing January 31st. So I want to ask the body to give them a warm House welcome, and thank you very much for all you've done in the past and all you continue to do.
Welcome to the Virginia Retired Teachers. It was great, I know many of us enjoyed visiting with you all earlier today, and I know you'll be spending the day here on Capitol Square, and I know we also had the opportunity to see a former member of the House here as a retired teacher, Jim Dillard, so it was great to, great to have you all here, and thanks for what you do. Delegate from Bartattat, Delegate Head.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Head, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, joining us in the gallery today or around the Capitol, we have some guests from the Virginia Association of Personal Care Providers, representing over 200 home care agencies and the 20,000-plus Virginians that are employed in the field in nearly every locality. The VAPCP works to save the Commonwealth millions of dollars and to provide peace of mind to families of loved ones. Madam Speaker, home care is the fastest-growing industry in the healthcare sector, both nationally and here in the Commonwealth, and here in Virginia, this year, more than one in six Virginia families will receive home care, and for all the great work that these folks do, I ask that you would all join me in giving them a warm House welcome.
Welcome to Richmond, and thank you all so much for what you do, with the home care specifically. Enjoy your day in Capitol Square. The delegate from Chesterfield, Delegate Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Today in the gallery, we have representatives from Virginians for the Arts participating in their Arts Advocacy Day. Over 100 arts advocates from across Virginia visited the General Assembly to visit with their legislators. Virginians for the Arts advocate for increased funding for the arts organizations across Virginia. Virginia is home to thousands of arts-related businesses, including museums and galleries, performing arts organizations, theaters, film, radio and TV, videography and photography, art schools, and graphic arts and design companies. The arts industry in Virginia creates jobs, promotes tourism, and plays a key role in community building, and on a daily basis, the arts create a positive impact on Virginia and Virginia students. So please, I know this is near to your heart, Madam Speaker, and so please join me in welcoming the Virginians for the Arts, and while they do.
Welcome to all of our friends from the art community, and thank you for what you do for all of us, and I think, yes, Delegate Robinson is correct, and the arts play a special place in the heart for me, and I'm thrilled to be a co-founder of the Arts Caucus here in the General Assembly, and thank you for what you do every day, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. Enjoy your day today. Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Simons.
Madam Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Simons, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to welcome members of the Peninsula Agency on Aging. And on behalf of Delegate Price, Delegate Mullin, and myself, it is such a pleasure to have you here with us today in Richmond advocating for the quality of life of seniors and family caregivers across the Virginia Peninsula. The Peninsula Agency on Aging serves thousands of seniors each year, providing essential assistance. These services include services like meals on wheels, serving nutritious meals, in-home care, wheelchair-accessible transportation, and more. Your commitment to elder justice and fighting against elder abuse, neglect, and mistreatment is an inspiration to us all, and I hope the members of the House will join me in offering a warm House welcome.
Wonderful to see the Peninsula Agency on Aging, and it's great to see you here again this year, you're here every year, and thank you. Enjoy the day. Delegate from Hampton, Delegate Ward.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Ward, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today joining us in the gallery are members of the Hampton Newport News Community Services Board, which is the premier provider of behavior, health, and intellectual and developmental disability services, and is the second-largest CSP in the Commonwealth of Virginia. It was created in 1971, and the Hampton Newport News Community Services Board provides a comprehensive continuum of services and supports promoting prevention, recovery, and self-determination for people affected by mental illnesses, substance abuse, and developmental disabilities. I ask that the House give a very warm welcome to the members of the Board of the Hampton Newport News Community Services Board.
Welcome to the Hampton Newport News Community Service Board, and thanks for all that you do. Enjoy your day. Delegate from Prince William, Delegate Guzman.
Madam Speaker, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate Guzman, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, today, in the gallery today, this was a pleasant surprise. My husband and two of my children are here to visit me, so I would ask them to please rise to be recognized, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank my husband for his continued support to join in this career, and to my children for forgiveness for all of the things that I'm missing while I'm in Richmond. So I just want them to know that I love them, and I hope it's the pleasure of this body to give them a warm House welcome.
Welcome to the family of Delegate Guzman. Enjoy your day. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for a motion.
Delegate Boliva, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would move that House Joint Resolution 148 on page 37 go by until February 6th. And then I would also like to request that be moved to the regular calendar.
All those in favor of moving HJR 148 by February 6th will say aye. Those opposed? HJR 146 will go by to February 6th.
HJR 148 will be moved to the regular calendar.
Delegate from Henrico, Delegate Van Valkenburg.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Van Valkenburg, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, members of the floor, joining us in the gallery today are members of the Richmond Association of Realtors. They are a few of the 5,500 Realtor members who work in the greater Richmond area, many of whom live and work in the greatest county in the Commonwealth, the county of Henrico. Seeing if you all are paying attention. All right. They represent clients in both residential and commercial property transactions, and across the Commonwealth, Realtors and the real estate industry have accounted for nearly $100 billion, that's billion with a B, of our gross state product in 2018, and the Richmond Association really puts their money where their mouth is, and are very active in our community, helping all of our local communities in the Richmond area thrive, so I hope it is the pleasure of the body to give them a warm House welcome.
Welcome to the Richmond Association of Realtors. Thanks for being here today. Delegate from Washington, Delegate O'Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate O'Quinn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Joining us today, hopefully in the gallery, is Leah Ross, the Executive Director of the Birthplace of Country Music Museum, located right on the Virginia-Tennessee line in Bristol. BCM seeks to perpetuate, promote, and celebrate Bristol's rich musical heritage and educate and engage audiences worldwide as to the impact and legacy of the 1927 Bristol recording sessions. So contrary to what our friends in Tennessee might tell you, Nashville is not the birthplace of country music, Bristol is. And so BCM accomplishes this mission through their three primary branches, the Birthplace of Country Music Museum, the Bristol Rhythm and Roots Reunion, and Radio Bristol. So if you've not had a chance to visit the museum, or to be with 50,000 of your closest friends at the Rhythm and Roots Reunion, I hope you will, and also hope that you will join me in giving Leah a warm House welcome.
Welcome to Bristol and the arts. I hope you're enjoying your day here, and we look forward to visiting the birthplace of country music soon. Delegate from Bartattat, Delegate Head. Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Converse Fowler.
Madam Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Converse Fowler, you have the floor.
Good. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to introduce my dear friends from Stop the Flooding Now and Wetlands Watch. If they would, in the gallery, please rise. Stop the Flooding Now is an organization that is comprised of residents in Virginia Beach, working to advocate for the good of their neighbors who are significantly affected by flooding. In 2016, 1,200 families were impacted by flooding, and this group started with the goal of increasing awareness and funding. Wetlands Watch works with both a top-down approach through state and federal policy advocacy, and a bottoms-up approach through using grassroots education and activism to influence local government, land use, and regulatory decisions. They are here today to support flood disclosure legislation. Please join us in giving them a warm House welcome.
Welcome to Wetlands Watch. Enjoy your day today. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Second morning hour order of business. The next order of business is the announcement of member requests to move legislation from any uncontested to regular calendar. Page 23 of the calendar, House Bill 1082 is moved to the regular calendar. Also, page 25, House Bill 1361. Page 27, House Bill 1498. Page 27, House Bill 1597. That completes my list of moves.
The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Third morning hour order of business. The next order of business is the announcement of requests by members for legislation to go by for the day and subsequent motion by the majority leader. Page 10 of the calendar, House Bill 166 goes by for the day. Page 11 of the calendar, House Bill 549. Page 30 of the calendar, House Bill 134. Page 37 of the calendar, House Bill 1491. Madam Speaker, that completes my list of bills to go by for the day.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that the previously announced legislation go by for the day.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, moves that the legislation is announced by the clerk go by for the day. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The motion is agreed to. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Fourth morning hour order of business. The next order of business is recognition of member requests for points of personal privilege. Please use your Request to Speak buttons to be recognized.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Watts.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate Watts, you have the floor.
This was not a planned point of personal privilege, but the, Dave, who I have been married to, I'm now going to say why I'm saying this, for 60 years today. Has been determined, partly because of our generation, you did things like corsages, there are roses in my office, there was a vase, and he doesn't normally do corsage or vase, the whole thing, but I think I've got to interpret that this dear man really wanted it to be known publicly to the world, that by God, we're still together. Speaking as the Delegate Guzman spoke, it's not easy. My mentor had me as an aide before I ran for office, just whether, and her whole purpose, and her husband's purpose, was to let us know whether or not we could take it, whether or not, serving in the General Assembly, our marriage can be ongoing. And I can tell you, there were more than a few times over the years when Dave said, "I didn't sign up for this." But he once said, "Well, I've read up, and okay, we're still here." And now let me just say finally, I think his determination this particular year is because, as we've witnessed each other's lives, that he really is happy for all the opportunities that I have been given this year because of all the work of many of my colleagues, and I am able to do a little bit in a leadership role that I never had before, and he's just saying, "I know I don't see you, I know you haven't talked to me on the phone in forever, but hey, this is good." And so again, on behalf of David A. Watts, a great guy, thank you.
Congratulations to our colleague Vivian, and to Dave. Onward for the next 60. Delegate from Pennsylvania, Delegate Adams.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate Adams, you have the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen of the House, I rise to address you on behalf of the overwhelming majority of constituents I represent in Southside Virginia. And I rise to add my voice to theirs in opposition to the series of bills engrossed yesterday that appear on today's calendar, legislation that will infringe upon the rights of the law-abiding citizens who keep and bear arms. These are the first votes many of us will take with respect to these matters, and before we do so, I think it's important to give pause and consider the circumstances surrounding these proposals that have stirred the passions of so many. The people who live in most of the counties that comprise this Commonwealth have a deep sense of our heritage of self-reliance and independence. We are a country built by settlers and pioneers who forged our civilization from the wilderness. Our nation was founded by patriots who gained independence and enshrined the right to arms in our Constitution. So bills that chip away at those rights are strongly resented by our people. And this resentment is especially strong in consideration of the facts and evidence that tell us, these proposed laws will have little to no bearing on preventing crime or promoting the public safety. It is important to recall how we came to this point. After the horror of the mass shooting in Virginia Beach, we were called into special session amid wildly irresponsible rhetoric, denigrating those who extended thoughts and prayers for victims, demanding instead that we do something. The language at that time was hyperbolic, outlandish, as if to suggest that Virginia has no laws respecting firearms, or no laws that would prohibit a mass shooting. And that rhetoric, as this body well knows, only intensified when we voted to adjourn the special session with referrals to the Virginia State Crime Commission. But the members of this body would have done well to consider the facts presented to that If so, it would be observed that the number of crimes involving the use of a firearm has steadily declined over several years as access has increased. It would be observed that the evidence shows us that laws limiting the number or frequency of firearm purchases are ineffective, and it would be observed that more people in Virginia are killed by knives than with all long guns combined. Do these facts comport with the justification for more gun laws and more proposals like the ones we see today? They do not. Instead, we're subjected to emotional appeals divorced from the facts. When it was reportedly conceded that the proposed laws would not have prevented the mass shooting used to justify the call for the special session, the obvious question that should have been raised is, who the new laws will affect? And the answer is, the law-abiding. That's who, the people that we represent. And the people of this Commonwealth could not have possibly done more to express their views. We all know that in over 100 localities, Virginians have passed resolutions supporting the idea of Second Amendment sanctuaries in their backyards. That is remarkable. And tens of thousands of those law-abiding people descended on the Capitol grounds, despite the smears that preceded their arrival, to demonstrate in an extraordinary protest. And to blithely respond by simply saying elections have consequences ignores these voices, and it ignores the significant regional differences that make up this Commonwealth. It ignores the special and unique heritage of freedom, due process, and right to self-defense we all hold. So I urge you colleagues, consider these matters when casting your votes today. Vote no. Reject the donors from outside the state. Reject the cynical politics that would tell us to never let a good crisis go to waste. Thank you.
The Delegate from Arlington, Delegate Hope.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate Hope, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, members of the body, just a few minutes, we're going to vote on seven gun violence prevention bills. These gun violence prevention bills have been debated for many years. In fact, gentleman from Fairfax, Delegate Plum, was talking about an aspect that's been debated for a few decades. I've carried many of the bills, a lot of people have carried many of the bills. And I think when you look at where we are now, based on where we've been over the last decade or so, families are hurting. People are sick and tired of being sick and tired. And the seven bills that are coming before this body that'll be voted on soon will all save lives, and they've been proven in other states to save lives. Universal background checks, reporting lost or stolen firearms, granting local authority to govern gun possession, prohibiting child access to firearms, substantial risk laws, limiting one handgun a month, disarming domestic abusers. I want this body to put the lives and the safety of our citizens and communities first, above the convenience of gun owners. For too many years, this body has put the convenience of gun owners above all else, and that has led to tragic consequences time and time again. And it's not just about the mass shootings that you see, that you hear about. It's about the 100 people that are dying every single day in this country because a gun is just left unattended, or access to guns is too easy and too convenient. That's what these bills are about. You want to talk about facts? These are facts from the Centers for Disease Control. 817 gun deaths in 2018. In 2017, that number rose to 1,041 gun deaths. These are all in Virginia. The firearm suicide rate has increased 15% over the last decade. The firearm homicide rate has increased 45% in the last decade in Virginia. 69% of firearm homicide victims are black men, many of them young adults. 32 children die by firearm each year in Virginia. 66% of intimate partner homicides are by firearm. One out of four firearm suicides are by current and former service members in our state. Of all the suicides in Virginia, almost two-thirds are by firearm. We're killing our children, we're killing our neighbors, our community members, our service members, sometimes our own family members, are put ahead of the convenience of firearms owners. And today is the first of that process to stop. Our voters, our constituents, are demanding that we do something, and we are doing something, we are acting. And these bills, and I look forward to the day when they become law of the Commonwealth. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The Delegate from Goochlin, Delegate McGuire.
Madam Speaker, a point of personal privilege.
Delegate McGuire, you have the floor.
There's a reason why our founding fathers refused to ratify the U.S. Constitution without the Second Amendment. They could put your head in the mindset of the Revolutionary War and what they were going through, and why we went against King George. You know, our country was founded on freedom, and once you lose one freedom, you begin to lose your other freedoms. We had a mass shooting in Virginia Beach last May, we all know about it. Even Governor Northam said that all the proposed gun legislation would not have stopped that. I will tell you this, it's our God-given right to protect ourself, our family, and our children, and if someone broke into your home to kill you and your children, you'd be very glad you had a gun. And if someone broke into your home to kill you and your children, and you didn't have a gun, you wish you had a gun. Now, Mark Twain said, "There are lies, there are damn lies, and there are statistics." I'm going to give you guys a couple of statistics. In 2018, 10,000 people were killed by DUI. And I got to tell you, I don't have a lot of respect for people that will do that. Imagine if it was your family minivan with children who were killed by somebody with a DUI. In 2018, there were 11,000 people killed by gun deaths, by criminals. But what you don't hear is there were 3,500 defensive gun deaths where someone saved their family's life, or their own life, because someone tried to mug them, or tried to break into their house. Our country was founded on freedom, we need to be very, very careful today with some of these gun bills that infringe. And our Second Amendment, it says, "shall not be infringed," and that's pretty simple English. Shall not be infringed, we need to be very careful with due process. Now, I'm looking at this from a life point of view. I don't care if you're a Democrat or Republican, to me, you're an American, and you're a human being, and we may not agree, I think we all have a heart, and we want to do something about suicide, and we want to do something about murder, but you cannot legislate evil. Evil exists, and the only way to stop a bad guy with a gun is a good person with a gun, meet force with force. I would ask the members of the chamber here, the members of the House of Delegates today to think long and hard about infringing on our Second Amendments. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate Herring, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I only rise just for a brief point, because something was said on the floor about the Crime Commission. And I want those members who weren't here to understand, the bills were sent to the Crime Commission, and I definitely and distinctly recall, there are three measures that are included in this package that we're about to vote on, that are identified by the experts invited by the other side of the aisle, and are experts. One of them is extreme protective order. So I don't want it, for those who are watching on livestream, to believe that this was not something that was considered. But what is unfortunate, and I want us all to understand, is that Crime Commission staff did a lot of work, and it was the members of the other side of the aisle who had control of that commission, and the Crime Commission was only able to issue a simple letter. And it is a matter of policy, of what we're deciding, but it is unfortunate that we did not have the privy of their work. But I will say this, I met with them, and I believe, the bills that we have before us are good, sound public policy, do not violate constitutional rights, and are a step toward protecting Virginia's and this Commonwealth. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The Clerk shall call the calendar.
House bills on third reading, uncontested calendar. Page 1, House Bill 88. Page 2, House Bills 106, 239, 240. Page 3, House Bills 369, 370, 505. Page 4, House Bills 515, 632, 849. Page 5, House Bills 1062, 1231, 1328.
Shall the bills pass? The Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 100, nays 0, abstentions 0.
Ayes 100, nays 0, abstentions 0, the bills pass.
House bills on third reading, regular calendar. House Bill 1071, a bill to amend and reenact Section 18.2388 of the Code of Virginia relating to profane swearing in public.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 76, nays 24, abstentions 0.
Ayes 76, nays 24, abstentions 0, the bill passes.
Page 6, House Bill 983, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 46.2, 1023, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to traffic incident management vehicles.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 97, nays 1, abstentions 0.
Ayes 97, nays 1, abstentions 0, the bill passes.
Page 7, House Bill 371, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 63.2, 1242.2, and other sections of the Code of Virginia, and to repeal the second enactment of Chapter 9 of the Acts of Assembly of 2018 relating to adoption by stepparent background check.
Madam Speaker, my speaker, lady.
Sorry. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I rise to speak to the bill.
Delegate Sickles, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to tell the body that this, the bill is the result of a tragic incident that happened in Virginia Beach, and a former member of this body asked me to submit the same bill, which I did, and have since stricken from the calendar. And the intention is good to require an adult who's living in a family where the biological parent, one of the biological parents is not present anymore, would have to undergo a background check if they wanted to get married. But actually, I think that this bill would do the exact opposite, you know, would not make it easier, make it more difficult for stepparents to adopt. And the purpose of a stepparent adoption is to incorporate the child into an existing family structure, providing parental rights and responsibilities to a person already acting, already there, acting in a parenting role, when the person they are replacing is not present, or not playing a significant role in the child's life. So this bill would actually discourage the formalization of the family that already exists. The current law, which sunsets without this bill, significantly slows down the adoption process, adds additional costs, including attorney's fees to families, and adds additional workloads to the social services and the courts. Additionally, it would impact LGBT families, where one parent must adopt the birth child of the other parent in order to ensure that all benefits, including inheritance and child support, flow to the child. It burdens families with additional costs and time and attorney's fees, and most importantly, bottom line, it does not keep children safer. So the intention is good, and one of the things I first heard saying is not being a lawyer when I came here is, bad cases make bad law. And I think that in this case, we need to allow this law to sunset, and I just believe it's not helpful and actually moves us in the wrong direction, so I would urge the body to reject HB 731.
Shall the bill pass?
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Bell.
I'd like to speak to my bell. So ladies and gentlemen, this was brought by a constituent, a Delegate Stully, in Virginia Beach, and a couple of years ago, you passed a bill that did something. Now, on February 23rd, for two weeks, almost three weeks, he'll be attending the murder trial, first-degree murder trial, of his daughter's murder. And the man who murdered his daughter had been, was her stepfather, who had adopted her as part of an adoption proceeding authorized by this court. Now, we love adoptions in this state, we want to make it as easy as possible, we want to make it as fast as possible when it's right. And in this case, what you have is the court can, get the terminology right, when someone asks to be adopted, the court can request an investigation and report into the adoptive parent. This bill doesn't say they have to. All the bill says is that when the court is making the decision on whether to require such an investigation and report, they should such an investigation and report, they should check out a background check. Now, one of the delegates asked, "How does that work?" FBI charges, we had staff check, it's 18 bucks, so it does cost money. Somebody's got to get the background check done. And the court doesn't have to then do an investigation. So if the crime doesn't warrant an investigation, they don't have to. And even if they do, and even if they do the investigation, the court can approve the parent to be the adoptive parent. We're not trying to slow this down. This doesn't target anyone in particular. Almost everyone in this body voted for this two years ago. And all it does is extend that good idea, because it is not unheard of for someone not to know, someone being the actual parent, everything they think they know about the person they're creating as a, bringing in as an adoptive parent into the life. So, it's a very modest bill. It affects a very discreet, small group. It is by no means preclusive. It doesn't even require the investigation to be done. Even if the investigation is done, it doesn't require the court to actually do anything. But we do think it's important that before the court confirms as an adoptive parent, a stepparent, they at least have the opportunity to review the criminal background check. I'd ask that you pass the bill. Thank you.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just in partial response, I believe if there is an issue in someone's background for somebody who's living in the house today, acting as a parent, they will never get a background check. So this is not going to solve the problem. This will not solve the problem. So, I hope that the body will vote no on HB 731.
Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Bell.
Request to speak to my bill.
Delegate Bell, you have the floor.
All right, so, all right, let's talk about the big picture now. So, we spend a lot of time in this body dealing with crimes against children, particularly sex crimes against children. I think, as most people know, but if this is the first you're hearing about it, let me tell you, it is not usually a stranger. The movies have somebody knocking on the door, throwing the kids in a pickup truck. The movies have somebody that you've never seen snatching them off a bicycle. That's not what happens. The vast majority of the time, it's someone in the household. The cliche which is true is that it is often the mother's boyfriend, stepfather, someone she brings into the house, who does not have a blood relation with the kids, although sometimes they do. And that is the person that takes advantage of the kids. Now, this bill does not have the ability to fix that horrible, awful truth. I wish it did, but it doesn't. However, you certainly have people who live with someone, who either don't know their background, or choose not to really think about their background, or maybe they do know, but that person is not right for the court to confirm. Now, will there be people who, because of this, decide not to become adoptive parents? I suppose. Good. If they were somebody that was actually going to present a threat to the kids, I don't want them to. Is it possible that some mother either doesn't know, or kind of knows but doesn't really want to face up to it, and in that background check, it shows that the adoptive father-to-be is in actual danger to the kids and should not be the adoptive parent to someone, like it happened in this case in Virginia Beach, where he murdered the child? Yes, indeed. I would ask you to pass the bill.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Simon, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I just want to bring to the body's attention a couple of things. This bill went through the Health, Welfare, and Institutions Committee, and so part of the reason that you're hearing about this late, for those of you that are wondering, well, wait a second, this was like on the uncontested docket, this came out, why am I hearing about this for the first time on third read? Just so you understand, the Virginia Poverty Law Center, the Family Law Section, the Virginia Bar have come out against this bill. They think that it's a bad bill. They think it's bad for the process, you know, because it went through the wrong, I said the wrong committee, it went through a different committee. It didn't get to the Courts Committee. And it's interesting, the former chair of the Courts Committee didn't think that this bill maybe needed to be vetted by the Courts Committee and the folks that have that expertise in family law and adoption. But given that it went through that process, I just want everybody to understand, those groups that would have spoken out earlier didn't have an opportunity to weigh in until now. And I hope it would be the pleasure of the body to reject, to vote against, vote no when we do a vote here in a second on House Bill 371.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 45, nays 52, abstentions 0.
Ayes 45, nays 52, abstentions 0, the bill fails.
Page 7, House Bill 1394, a bill to amend and reenact Section 22.1207.2 of the Code of Virginia relating to family life education programs, materials, summaries.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 76, nays 3, abstentions 0.
Ayes 76, nays 23, abstentions 0, the bill passes.
House Bill 949.
Madam Speaker. Delegate from Bedford, Delegate Byron.
I guess it would be parliamentary, whatever. I'm trying to find out, someone notified me that the live streaming is down again. Is that the case?
The clerk's office is checking right now.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could we go to you and check on that? I think it's important the public's able to watch what goes on.
The House will be at ease.
The House will come to order. Even when there are capacity issues, the tape is still rolling and everything is archived, so everything is available, but we're all back up, live streaming is on. Madam Clerk.
Returning to page seven of the calendar, House Bill 949, a bill to amend and reenact section 4.1206 of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control, privileges of local special events licensees.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes 91, nays 7 abstentions 0.
Eyes 91, nays 7 abstentions 0, the bill passes.
Page eight, House Bill 390, a bill to amend and reenact sections 3.2102 and other sections of the Code of Virginia and to repeal sections 4.1206 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control license and fee reform.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk will close the roll.
Eyes 89, nays 11 abstentions 0.
Eyes 89, nays 11 abstentions 0, the bill passes.
House Bill 1, a bill to amend and reenact sections 24.2, 416.1 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to absentee voting, no excuse required.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes 65, nays 35 abstentions 0.
Eyes 65, nays 35 abstentions 0, the bill passes.
Page nine, House Bill 2, a bill to amend and reenact sections 18.2, 308.2 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to firearm transfers, criminal history record information check penalty.
The Delegate from Fauke or Delegate Weber.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. During the debate of this bill yesterday, there was a couple of misrepresentations that I would like to clear up. The first, it was said that it's, you know, if you buy a gun over the Internet, you don't have to go undergo a background check. You do. Every time I purchase a firearm from Cabela's or any other, it has to be shipped by federal law to an FFL dealer where you undergo a background check, and that FFL dealer may charge $15 or more to undergo that check. Period. In regards to the bill itself, for me, the one question is this: If one criminal purchases a firearm from another criminal, who does the background check? This is one of those bills that only law-abiding citizens follow. Thank you.
The Delegate from Franklin, Delegate Poindexter.
Madam Speaker, I rise to talk to the bill, speak to the bill.
Delegate Poindexter, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, members of the body, I understand UVC is popular with many. They may be well-intentioned, but the issue is that they also address that unknown fact of do they work? Any computer database that's used for such an endeavor is only going to be as good as the data in that database. Let's take 2014, 500,000 fugitives removed from the federal database by the Department of Justice. How many were not entered since then? Then there's the issue of expunging juvenile records. Are we going to continue that, so juveniles that are very troublesome are going to continue to be expunged and not in the database? Are we going to fix that issue? So it's troubling. Many of these would come of age and could potentially miss the check. Then we have checks by states, or the updates by states to the databases vary across the country. And we have human failures. We've seen the FBI fail, we've seen military service fail, we've seen individuals at courts fail in updating the database properly. So if the intent of this legislation is to curb mass murders without the database being really, basically 100% correct, we're going to miss them, they're not going to be covered. But the real issue, Madam Chair, members of the body, do these really work? One of my daughters attended college in Colorado, and I recently got a communication out there from there. 2013, Colorado passed a bill very similar to this, very similar to HB 674. The governor, the lawmakers from both parties, the press, all claimed that this was going to reduce crime, promote public safety, reduce gun violence. It was a common sense law. But I looked at those numbers. Since 2014, when the law went into effect, there's been a steady rise in gun violence and homicides. Just the latest, year over year, from 2017 to 2018, a 12% increase in homicides and a 19% increase in aggravated assaults. So a chilling unknown also to this bill is the records aspect. So an individual that loses their firearm, that doesn't get one in this case, could be an issue as well. So ladies and gentlemen of the chamber, why do we want to pass a bill that we know and that there's no record of working? I would encourage you, members, to vote no on the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes 54, nays 46 abstentions 0.
Eyes 54, nays 46 abstentions 0, the bill passes.
House Bill 9, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Article 4 of Chapter 7 of Title 18.2 a section numbered 18.2287.5 relating to reporting lost or stolen firearms, civil penalty.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes 55, nays 44 abstentions 0.
Eyes 55, nays 44 abstentions 0, the bill passes.
House Bill 57, a bill to amend and reenact sections 24.2, 311 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to elections, date of June primary election.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes 90, nays 10 abstentions 0.
Eyes 90, nays 10 abstentions 0, the bill passes.
Page 10 of the calendar, House Bill 166 has gone by for the day. House Bill 186, a bill to amend and reenact section 24.2604.3 of the Code of Virginia relating to Election Day page program, central absentee voter precincts.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes 87, nays 11 abstentions 0.
Eyes 87, nays 11 abstentions 0, the bill passes.
House Bill 207, a bill to amend and reenact sections 24.2, 416.1 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to absentee voting, no excuse required, permanent absentee voter list.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes 53, nays 46 abstentions 0.
Eyes 53, nays 46 abstentions 0, the bill passes.
Page 11, House Bill 246, a bill to amend and reenact section 9.1102 of the Code of Virginia and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Article 1 of Chapter 17 of Title 15.2 a section numbered 15.21723.1 relating to local law enforcement agencies' body-worn camera systems.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes 62, nays 38 abstentions 0.
Eyes 62, nays 38 abstentions 0, the bill passes.
Page 11 of the calendar, House Bill 421, a bill to amend and reenact sections 15.2915 and 15.2915.5 of the Code of Virginia and to repeal section 15.2915.1 relating to control of firearms by localities.
The Delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Rush.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Rush, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the House. Today I'll be speaking on House Bill 421, and I would like to talk about what this bill doesn't do and what it does. Madam Speaker, members of the House, what this bill doesn't do is give parity to the well over 100 localities that have declared themselves Second Amendment sanctuary status. Madam Speaker, over the last couple of months, which I'm sure you followed in the newspaper and are aware of, thousands of Virginians have showed up and petitioned their local governments, and hundreds of elected officials, both Republicans and Democrats, have been asked to be left out of this debate, to be left alone. This bill does not allow that. Now, Madam Speaker, let's talk about what the bill does. This broadly written bill would allow any locality to put any restrictions on firearms, their possession, their transportation, their implements, and their ammunition. Now, Madam, excuse me, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, let me give you a very practical example. I represent the town of Floyd. So the practical example is this: A resident who lives in the town of Floyd plans on shooting at a public range in western Montgomery County. She gets up, she loads her firearms, her implements, her magazines, her ammunition, puts them in her car, she drives from the town of Floyd into the county of Floyd, into Montgomery County, into Christiansburg, and then into Blacksburg. That is five jurisdictions, Madam Speaker. That could be five different ordinances governing possession of firearms. And Madam Speaker, members of the House, unlike us, they don't meet just one time a year. Those local bodies meet year-round. So these ordinances could literally be changed multiple times a year. So Madam Speaker, members of this House, if you have ever said on the campaign trail, at a town hall, in an email, in an interview, that you do not want to make law-abiding citizens criminals, this bill will do that. If you have ever said, "I do not want a fringe on Second Amendment rights," this bill could do that. And finally, Madam Speaker, I'm very sympathetic to my good friend from Newport News's community. I've often said that our communities are very similar. We have lack of economic and educational opportunities, family structures, substance abuse problems, and I know that this side of the aisle would be happy to work with her on those issues for rural Virginia and urban Virginia. And so we want to make sure that we continue to make our communities better. But Madam Speaker, members of this House, let's use some common sense today and defeat this bill. Thank you.
Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Speaking to the bill, Madam Speaker.
Delegate Price, you have the floor.
Thank you. I appreciate my good friend from the other side of the aisle, but I would like to clarify what I said yesterday. The fact that House Bill 421 is permissive, Madam Speaker, would allow for any locality to not enact ordinances that deal with firearms. So I think they're referring to them as 2A. They would not have to do anything. This is permissive. What it would allow for is localities like mine, while we may have a lot in common, we have a lot different, and our gun violence issues are different. So what House Bill 421 would allow for are the localities that do want to help keep their citizens and residents safe by enacting gun ordinances that, again, for the record, are still subject to the United States Constitution, the Virginia Constitution, federal law, and state law. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity for me to clarify what House Bill 421 does.
The Delegate from Goochellin, Delegate McGuire.
Speaking to the bill.
Delegate McGuire, you have the floor.
So these possible ordinances, in 1997, England imposed the strictest gun laws in the entire world, and just last year, London had more murders than New York City. So now the mayor of London is proposing to outlaw knives. It's not a gun problem, it's not a knife problem, it's a mental health problem, and we deserve the right to protect ourselves, our family, and our children, and I would ask the body to vote no on this bill.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes 50, nays 48 abstentions 0.
Eyes 50, nays 48 abstentions 0, the bill passes.
Page 11 of the calendar, House Bill 549 has gone by for the day. Page 12, House Bill 585, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 15.2223.4 relating to the Comprehensive Plan Transit Oriented Development.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes 55, nays 45 abstentions 0.
Eyes 55, nays 45 abstentions 0, the bill passes.
House Bill 674, a bill to amend and reenact sections 18.2308.09 and other sections of the Code of Virginia and adding a section numbered 19.2387.3 relating to firearms, removal from persons possessing substantial risk penalties.
The Delegate from Culpeper, Delegate Friedus.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Friedus, you have the floor.
So here it is, we're about to vote on red flag laws. And again, I understand the arguments that have been made by the other side of the aisle and the concerns with respect to safety, and specifically some of the concerns that were brought up with respect to preventing suicide. But the thing I want to point out here is, once again, despite the claim that a judge has to look at this before law enforcement can come to your home and confiscate your property, all it takes is a magistrate to sign an emergency protective order, and that can go forward. So yeah, the judge might be able to look at it 14 days later, but at that point, the action has already taken place. Police have already come to your home, and they have confiscated your property, not because you did something wrong, but because a magistrate was convinced that you might do something wrong. And then when they actually do that search warrant, do they have a specific search warrant to search a specific portion of your property for specific items? Not as far as I can tell, it looks like it's pretty open-ended for firearms. So here's the scenario: This is, in my opinion, a violation of Fourth Amendment rights, of Fifth Amendment rights, of Second Amendment rights, and like I said before, I think this will be potentially used to be a violation of First Amendment rights. As again, magistrates go over, looking at your Facebook or your Twitter account or whatnot, in order to determine, does this particular comment that you might have made constitute a substantial threat to yourself or others, or was it some offhanded comment you made? And what sort of incentive do they have? Do they have the incentive at that point to protect your First Amendment rights or your Second Amendment rights, or is there incentive at that point to use police force in order to take your property, to take your firearms? I think the incentive that we're creating for them is to take your firearms. And then finally, the argument for this with respect to the fact that it would actually help prevent suicide, again, I will say again, I'm a combat veteran, I have a lot of friends that are combat veterans. You tell my combat veteran friends that the moment they reach out and they try to get help, that they can now potentially be in a situation where the police are going to come to their home and take their firearms, that is not going to encourage them to seek help. Not to mention the fact that because, within this particular emergency protective order, the police are just going to show up, take your guns, and leave, they don't know how many firearms you have. So police show up, they search your house, they find the two obvious ones, right? They find the gun by the nightstand, maybe find the shotgun over the man, and then they leave. And now you're sitting there alone, you feel stigmatized, law enforcement came to your house without any notification to take your property because you reached out to someone that you thought you could trust to help you, but you've still got one more gun left in the house. What do you think happens next at that point? So I would encourage everybody, don't just oppose this based off of violations of essential civil liberties, and I believe in eroding due process, vote against this because I don't believe it's actually going to achieve the intended effect, especially with respect to preventing suicide. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Sullivan, you have the floor.
We've talked about this a lot, I don't want to take too much of the body's time. I want to focus on a couple of things. One, due process. This bill is full of due process. The Delegate talked about the magistrate doing, going over Facebook. This bill requires law enforcement to do an independent investigation, not the magistrate, not the judge. Magistrates are included in this in order to make it accessible to the entire Commonwealth. There are some parts of the Commonwealth where it's hard to get in touch with a judge quickly, other parts of the Commonwealth where it's easier to get in touch with a magistrate. It's interesting that this bill has become now an object of derision of magistrates. Our system is based on magistrates who do the guts of the work when it comes to law enforcement. Magistrates issue arrest warrants, they have the power and are experienced at issuing warrants where people's liberty are at stake. Magistrates issue- Magistrates issue search warrants right now. Nothing in this bill creates that, right? It's what magistrates do now. They issue search warrants when they find probable cause that something needs to be searched for. They do that every day, seven days a week. They make other decisions having to do with people's liberty. They hold bail hearings and decide whether someone should or should not get out of jail. They deal with people's freedom all the time, and they're well-qualified to deal with this issue. You know, one thing a lot of people in this chamber don't know is that we actually have in our midst a former magistrate. And if she's so inclined, I'd be interested in her thoughts on exactly how well magistrates are qualified to deal with this. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Carol Foy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaking to the bill.
Delegate Carol Foy, you have the floor.
So, let me be clear. As a former magistrate in the Commonwealth of Virginia, here in Richmond, Virginia, I take full objection to the attack on magistrates and what we do and the importance of our job. So, before your constitutional rights and civil liberties can be infringed on, before a weapon could be taken, before you could be taken into custody, before you can actually be apprehended by an officer, taken to a hospital, and not released until you are restored to competency, those are the decisions that I make as a magistrate. Every day, it was my job to protect people's constitutional rights and civil liberties. Let it be known that before any type of infringement on any type of right could happen, the state law enforcement officers, they had to go through me. And there were many times there were petitions that were denied unequivocally because I did not believe that the standard had been met to actually infringe upon somebody's due process, to have them incarcerated, to have them actually sent to the hospital, to have their weapons taken. The people who put GPS on people's vehicles, they have to go through a magistrate to get that done. To have someone, the state track you, your location, your whereabouts, without you knowing, that's a magistrate. For someone to actually, as I said, be hospitalized for days, weeks, until you're restored, making that determination, that's a magistrate. Before this bill, I had the authority to have an officer go into your home to take your weapon. That was a magistrate. For you to be arrested today, that is a magistrate. That is what we do. We do the grunt work that judges don't. We work seven days a week, 365 days a year. We have no breaks, we have no vacation, because we are here as the backstop to protect all of you. So, to say that a magistrate is somehow inferior, or that it's somehow a way to get around the Constitution, we are the protectors of the Constitution. We are judicial officers. We have to take a magisterial exam. We have weeks of classes we have to take, and guess what? If you don't pass that exam, you don't become a magistrate, and it is akin to the bar, and I know because I've taken two, California and Virginia. So, I just want to be very clear about what this is, what this bill does. It has the protections. It protects due process. It upholds the Constitution, and that's what I want to make very clear. So, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions that you have. But let the record be clear.
Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Culpeper, Delegate Freedus.
So, I think it's interesting. I mean, first of all, if we want to pretend that I'm attacking magistrates simply because I don't want a magistrate to have this kind of power, you can do that. It's an ad-hum and attack, maybe a red herring fallacy, I'm not sure, what they learned in magistrate school. But the point is this: If magistrates could already do everything that you just talked about with respect to what we're about to vote on today, you wouldn't need this law. So, clearly, this is an expansion of government power, and that's what I'm arguing against. Not against magistrates specifically. I'm arguing against this expansion of magisterial power in order to infringe on essential civil liberties. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes fifty-two, nays forty-six, abstentions zero.
Eyes fifty-two, nays forty-six, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 812, a bill to amend and reenact section 18.2, 308.2:2 of the Code of Virginia relating to purchase of handguns, limitation on handgun purchases, penalty.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes fifty-three, nays forty-seven, abstentions zero.
Eyes fifty-three, nays forty-seven, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
Page 13, House Bill 1004, a bill to amend and reenact sections 18.2, 308.1:4 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to protective orders, possession of firearms, surrender or transfer of firearms, penalty.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes fifty-eight, nays forty-two, abstentions zero.
Eyes fifty-eight, nays forty-two, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 1083, a bill to amend and reenact section 18.2, 56.2 of the Code of Virginia relating to allowing access to firearms by minors, penalty.
The delegate from Halifax, Delegate Edmonds.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Edmonds, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, we're living in what has become two very different Virginias. There's the Virginia that is urbanized and the Virginia that is rural. There's the Virginia where kids spend much of their time afield, often hunting with friends, and the Virginia where kids go to malls, play sports, and video games, and rarely ever find themselves in the woods. I know I certainly spent a lot of time as a teenager hunting with my friends. Madam Speaker, I represent a very rural district. Many of my constituents have firearms that they use to protect themselves. Many others use firearms for hunting, which, in many cases, is a family affair. I know it is in my family. I've taken my children with me hunting since they were very young. I trained them in firearm safety myself, and they are extremely firearm-safe handlers. Madam Speaker, I'm not sure that allowing my 16-year-old daughter to hunt by herself with her peers, or be in the presence of a gun in my vehicle, wouldn't be against the law, should someone report me and say that I was handling those guns recklessly. I understand the word reckless is the term used in the bill to determine guilt, but, Madam Speaker, that is a very ambiguous term, and I believe it will deter other parents from taking their own children out hunting, or even a friend's children, for fear that someone could report them for giving the child access to a gun and thereby could become a felon. Madam Speaker, I recognize that this bill wasn't drawn as a target to stop youth from hunting, but I'm afraid that it will be an unintended consequence of its passage, and I urge the House not to pass House Bill 1083. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The delegate from Acmac, Delegate Bloxham.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Rise to speak to the bill.
Delegate Bloxham, you have the floor.
So, I have the same concerns as Delegate Edmonds. When I read this bill, and I go back and I think about my son starting to hunt, at the age of 12, I sent him in the woods by himself. Some people would say that was reckless. I knew that he was trained how to hunt. I also know that hunting by yourself is the safest way to hunt. At the age of about 14, I'd seen how he handled a gun. I'd seen his friends. Most of them hunted every chance they could. At the age of 15, his good friend Travis, that'd be Travis in Artham, got his driver's license. They've been hunting together since he turned 16. They'd come together at least once a week, drive down to the local pond, and go duck hunting. I'm afraid the use of the term reckless and the age restrictions in this bill might even turn me into a felon, or at the very least, have amiss me. I hope it is the will of the body to defeat the bill.
The delegate from Chesapeake, Delegate Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaking to the bill.
Delegate Hayes, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'll just be brief. I think, as we debated this issue on yesterday, most of the, well, all of the issues regarding this bill were addressed. Again, the common denominator here is reckless. I just need everyone to understand and know that we already have on the books in the Commonwealth this piece about people and the prevention of having our guns in front of children. We're simply moving from the age of 14 to 18. And then, finally, I just want to say, and I don't have an apple, but no matter how you slice this, whether you go in triangles, or if you cut it in squares, this is about being responsible with your weapon and not recklessly leaving a loaded, unsecured firearm in the presence of minors. The reason we have gone to making this a felony is because those states that have moved to making this a felony, the numbers show that the number of teen suicides have actually gone down. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaking to the bill.
Delegate Gilbert, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, it was frustrating yesterday. We debated all these bills for about 67-odd minutes. There were lots of, I think, four or five different bills where things were uttered on this floor that turned out not to be the complete truth. Not because anybody necessarily misrepresented intentionally what the bill did, but perhaps because they just don't understand what is in the bill. The gentleman explaining his bill just said something that is completely untrue. Reckless is not the standard for the scenarios that Delegate Bloxham and Delegate Edmonds were just talking about. That is not the standard. There is no recklessness component for unlawfully leaving your child unattended with a firearm, anyone under the age of 18. All those hunting scenarios that are so common in rural Virginia are going to be illegal now, and not with any recklessness component whatsoever. Just letting your child, no matter how well they're trained, no matter how long they've been hunting, even up to today, no matter how many hunter safety courses they've had, how proficient they are with a firearm, it will be illegal for you to let your child go hunting in rural Virginia under this bill, and there is not a recklessness component to that. The gentleman's only talking about half of his bill. He didn't address the very valid concerns that people who live in an area with a hunting heritage have about this bill, and about the fact that it goes too far, and about the fact that people putting forth this legislation may not even understand what it does. And that's a problem, and not just on this bill, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Simon, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, the gentleman from Shenandoah, the delegate from Shenandoah talked about the other half of the bill. I just want to talk about the two halves of the bill for a second, because I heard this yesterday. Because 18.2, 56.2, Section B, the only changes, if you put the highlight on, you can read this, the only changes to 18.2, 56.2 is we changed shall be to is. We changed the word 12 to the number 12. We changed shall be to is. We changed shall mean to means. We changed 21, the letters, to 21, the numbers. We added of age after years, and we added older, okay? Nothing changed substantively in the second half of the bill that the gentleman referenced. And I'm just reading it here, and so it says, it remains unlawful still for a person knowingly authorized a child under 21 to do these things. The change to a class six felony only applies to the first half of the bill, Section A, which says it's unlawful for a person to recklessly leave, to leave a loaded, unsecured firearm in such a manner. So, all those hunting scenarios do fall under B. Nothing has changed in Section B. It's still unlawful, same as it ever has been. So, don't tell us we don't know how to read bills, Madam Speaker. I hope it be the pleasure of the body to engross this bill, to pass House Bill 1083.
Shall the bill pass?
Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, I had my request to speak button on.
Delegate from Culpeper, Delegate Freedus.
Speaking to the bill.
Delegate Freedus, you have the floor.
So, I'm not actually as concerned with respect to the hunting prospects of this, although that is a concern. I'm more concerned, again, with the question of reckless, because I've already seen legal cases where reckless has been pretty openly and broadly interpreted, especially if you have a Commonwealth attorney that has decided that they're going to have a no-tolerance policy toward firearms or any sort of gun crimes. There's been situations where somebody might not have had a permit for a weapon, but they used a firearm in order to defend themselves or defend their business, and they were still prosecuted for that, even though the only reason the attorney even knew about it was because they actually used it in self-defense. And we have a scenario right here where, again, I'm still not sure. If I have a firearm on my nightstand by my bed, no round in the chamber, just rounds in the magazine, and someone is kicking in the door of my house while I'm down here in Richmond, trying to get to my 17-year-old daughter, maybe it's somebody that was released early on parole, that is now going to kick in this door and come after my 17-year-old daughter. If she has to come upstairs and pick up my gun to defend herself, am I a felon? Is she a felon? Is some Commonwealth attorney going to have to look at this and decide whether or not it was reckless that I had a firearm there on the nightstand? These are the sort of things that I don't want them having to worry about in a situation where you might need to use a firearm for self-defense purposes. And these are the sort of unintended consequences with these bills that never get reported about because all we listen to is what the intention of the bill is. And I don't doubt for a second the Delegate Hayes has good intentions. But it's been pointed out before, we don't write intentions, we write laws. And those laws are going to be interpreted, and how they are interpreted can have very grave consequences for our constituents. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes 54, nays 46, abstentions zero.
Eyes 54, nays 46, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 1116, a bill to amend and reenact sections 24.2, 511, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to political parties' notification of adoption of primary election, certification of candidates.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes 56, nays 44, abstentions zero.
Eyes 56, nays 44, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
Page 14, House Bill 1402, a bill to amend and reenact section 24.2, 643 of the Code of Virginia relating to polling place procedures, residence address of voter not announced.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes 100, nays 0, abstentions 0.
Eyes 100, nays 0, abstentions 0, the bill passes.
House Bill 238, a bill to amend and reenact section 24.2, 709, as it is currently effective and as it shall become effective of the Code of Virginia relating to absentee voting, deadline for returning absentee ballot.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Delegate from Fairfax.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yesterday, we had concerns about people voting in California before the 7:00 p.m. deadline, and so Delegate Watts immediately was here. She's number-oriented, she says eastern time, got to make it eastern time. So, if you vote for this bill, as 99 people did last year, I would promise to add eastern time to this thing so that, so that if that ballot says 1:01 p.m. and stamped Honolulu, it will be rejected on that Friday at noon. So, I hope you'll vote for the bill. Thank you very much.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes 100, nays 0, abstentions 0.
Eyes 100, nays 0, abstentions 0, the bill passes.
House Bill 406, a bill to amend and reenact section 15.2... House Bill 406, a bill to amend and reenact Section 15.22510 of the Code of Virginia relating to comparative report of local government revenues and expenditures. Filing date.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 98, nays zero, abstentions zero.
Ayes 98, nays zero, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
House Bills on Second Reading Uncontested Calendar. Page 15, House Bill 146, a bill to amend and reenact Section 24.2622 of the Code of Virginia relating to sample ballots, color of paper of unofficial sample ballots, reported from privileges and elections.
The delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the measure.
Delegate Lindsey, you have the floor.
HB 46, just simply put, it seems like an oversimplification, but it allows for sample ballots to be on yellow paper. And for most here, they wonder, well, what's so significant about sample ballots being on yellow paper? And this, this is a measure to, to change a voter repression activity. It used to be that in the African-American community, there was something called the golden rod ballot. Where respected members of the community, they may have been clergy, they may have been community leaders otherwise, or political leaders, would, would put out the golden rod ballot on yellow paper to talk about the different offices or different positions that, that they advocated for, in a, in a, in an effort of voter suppression and, and one of the activities to keep down that type of information throughout the community. That, that colored paper became illegal. The Department of Elections has, has vetted this, this request. It seems that they have no problem with it whatsoever, and it would be my request that this matter be, that this measure be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 63, a bill to amend and reenact Section 17.1414 of the Code of Virginia relating to Court of Appeals, Use of Moot Courtroom at Accredited Law Schools, reported from Courts of Justice.
Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Miares.
Madam Speaker, HB 63 just provides that upon proper agreement with the applicable authorities, the Court of Appeals may use the moot courtroom of any accredited law school located in the Commonwealth for holding of court and for its ancillary functions. It's the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 94, a bill to amend and reenact Section 63.21202 of the Code of Virginia relating to legal custodian notice of adoption proceeding, reported from Courts of Justice with amendment.
The delegate from Frederick, Delegate Collins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to move the amendment, please.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee amendment is agreed to. Delegate Collins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a very simple bill requiring that when there is an adoption proceeding, that the parties that actually have the child in their custody and also any litigants have filed petitions be notified of the adoption proceedings. I would ask that we engross the bill and move it on to its third reading.
Page 16, House Bill 103, a bill to amend and reenact Section 23.1900 of the Code of Virginia relating to certain institutions of higher education, transcript notations, expungement, reported from Education.
The delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the measure.
Delegate Lindsey, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, HB 103 was, if you recall, a few years ago, probably about three years ago, we, we looked at legislation to make sure that on transcripts, we noted when persons withdrew from institutions during proceedings that, where there was some allegation of untoward behavior. We also looked at having some sort of notice on the transcripts to speak about whether or not that person had, in fact, been found to have violated the code of, the university codes of conduct. We did not put in place a process whereby we could do expungements or do clarifications in the event that the person was vindicated, and, and this, this measure addresses that. I would hope that it would be the pleasure of the body to engross this matter, this measure and pass it on to the third reading.
House Bill 104, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Chapter 4 of Title 23.1, a section numbered 23.1412 relating to public institutions of higher education, non-academic student codes of conduct, reported from Education with amendment.
The delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, speaking to HB 104, this measure allows for a due process, process within our university systems as it relates to individuals who have had allegations made against them and, and have hearings before the university boards or tribunal systems. This is something that is, is a consensus bill with many of the stakeholder groups. It is a bill that CHEV has strongly supported. I hope that this is a measure that, that is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Shall the amendment be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the amendment is agreed to.
Page 17, House Bill 117, a bill to amend and reenact Section 2.22423 of the Code of Virginia relating to Virginia Geographic Information Network Advisory Board Membership, reported from Communications Technology and Innovation.
The delegate from Lennenberg, Delegate Wright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 117 would allow the Virginia Geographic Information Network Advisory Board to be increased by two members. It currently has 16 members, and the VGIN Advisory Board has discussed the current composition of the board and the missing representation from the local government GIS practitioner community. This community has a significant role to contribute to the discussions of the VGIN Advisory Board and helping the board provide guidance to the division. The language proposes the addition of two positions from county, city, town, or regional government geographic information system directors or managers representing diverse regions of the Commonwealth. These positions will be appointed by the governor, and the terms of appointment for local government directors or managers will be two years and limited to consecutive terms. The intent is to provide diversity of input and opportunity for participation by the local government GIS practitioner community. I would move that we would engross this bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 477, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 16.1241 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to juveniles trial as adult, reported from Courts of Justice with substitute.
The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Guzman.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to move the substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Guzman.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 477 increases the minimum age at which juveniles are trial as adults in circuit courts for most crimes, from 14 to 16. It also requires that evidence is gathered and a hearing conducted before the motion to transfer juveniles can be considered complete. The current process for certifying youth to be trial as adults is too fast to obtain sufficient information to truly determine if trial as an adult is helpful or appropriate. In Virginia, we have found that these motions have been filed when it's unnecessary, and they are then denied at a higher rate. These changes will allow for a hearing before the motion and ensure that we are only sending juveniles to the Department of Corrections when it's necessary. It's imperative that juveniles are given the opportunity to go through rehab programs before being sent to prison. Madam Speaker, I've been working on this legislation for the past three years, and this year has the support of the Governor's Office, the Department of Juvenile Justice, the Commonwealth's Attorney, and the Virginia Association of Criminal Defense Lawyers. And I hope it is the will of this body to pass this bill into the third reading.
House Bill 610, a bill to amend and reenact Sections, Section 8.01243 of the Code of Virginia relating to limitations, period, previously time-barred actions, sexual abuse, two-year time period to file, reported from Courts of Justice.
The delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Miares.
Madam Speaker, HB 610 simply creates a two-year time period on or after July 1st, 2020 through July 1st, 2022, within which persons previously time-barred from filing an action for injury for sexual abuse occurring during their infancy or incapacity of such person may file such actions. For the body if it's not aware, we do have, we do not have statute of limitations for felonies. We do have them on civil actions. This is partly a result of the grand jury report that came out of Pennsylvania on the Catholic priest abuse scandal, where they recommended allowing, in Virginia, we have a 20-year statute of limitations, allowing those periods of times, a two-year period of time, people can thus bring civil action. And if it's the pleasure of this body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 611, a bill to amend and reenact Section 23.11304 of the Code of Virginia relating to public institutions of higher education, governing boards, educational programs, reported from Education with substitute.
The delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Miares.
Madam Speaker, HB 611 is a kind of a companion bill from a bill that was passed from this body last year, if I recall unanimously, with new, with new members, that bill last year, with new members on the Board of Visitors of our public colleges to be, get training on student debt trends and a variety of other issues. This would then apply to our current members as well, if it is the pleasure of this body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to.
House Bill 721, a bill to amend and reenact Section 16.1283.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to post-adoption contact and communication agreements, involuntary termination of parental rights, reported from Courts of Justice.
The delegate from Loudoun, Delegate Reed.
Madam Speaker, House Bill 721 clarifies the language from a bill that I patroned last year regarding permissive post-adoption communication agreements between adopted children and their parents. This clarification ensures that the code actually applies as it was intended. I move that the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
House Bill 742, a bill to amend and reenact Section 15.2926.3 of the Code of Virginia relating to local regulation of unmanned aerial systems, reported from Communications Technology and Innovation with substitute.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Bolivar.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Bolivar.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, what House Bill 742 does is provide our political subdivisions with the ability to manage potential conflicts between an unmanned aerial system and other uses on property that is actually owned by the political subdivision. I think, as many of you all are aware, Virginia's been positioning itself to be a leader in unmanned aerial system technology over the last couple of years. I think we're very proud of that. And as part of that effort, the General Assembly passed a law stating that no political subdivision could regulate any aspect of these systems. That was meant to prevent a patchwork of regulations, but it also means that political subdivisions can't adopt reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions for the takeoff and landing of drones on public property to prevent conflicting uses that are on that property. And so the question was, is how do you balance between this new technology and also the concerns about our parks and our schools and any other public space to make sure that you're compete or managing these competing uses? This bill is the work of a broad range of stakeholders. It has support from both the industry and our local governments. And what it does is allow our public entities to be able to manage these conflicting uses, but within a conflicting or within a consistent framework adopted by the Department of Aviation. So out of an abundance of caution, so I don't drone on, folks, I would move that we engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page 19, House Bill 743, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Chapter 4 of Title 23.1, a section numbered 23.1412 relating to public institutions of higher education, private student loan information advising, reported from Education with substitute.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Bolivar.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Bolivar.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, the purpose of House Bill 743 is to ensure that students who take out private loans are aware of the decision-making and consumer protection tools that are available through our State Council of Our Education. In the federal process for taking out a public loan, there are some very robust counseling decisions and education that's provided. However, the information provided to a private student loan really deals with just the mechanics of that loan. What this bill does is ensure that those students know about the existence of Virginia's student loan ombudsman, and also the fact that the CHEV website has some great information to help this student in that decision-making process, such as potential earning power of selected majors and career paths. Appreciate the Virginia Bankers Association working with me on this bill, and move to engross it on to its third reading.
House Bill 752, a bill to amend and reenact Section 19.2295.2:1 of the Code of Virginia relating to post-release incarceration of felons sentenced for certain offenses, reported from Courts of Justice with substitute.
The delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Jones.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Jones.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 752 changes the phrase "post-release supervision" to "post-release incarceration" across several code sections as it relates to the sex offender registry, and this is a recommendation of the Judicial Council. Hope it is the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 861, a bill to amend and reenact Section 124.3 of the Code of Virginia relating to best interests of the child, act of violence, force, or threat against intimate partner or the intimate partner's child, history of child abuse, reported from Courts of Justice.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Levine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, HB 861 requires in custody determinations, courts to take account of a parent's history of domestic violence or child abuse. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page 20, House Bill 863, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 20-16 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to persons other than ministers who may celebrate rites of marriage, filing of the marriage record, reported from Courts of Justice with substitute.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Levine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Levine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, HB 863 makes it easier for people to choose who their wedding officiant is. It removes a lot of red tape so that those people who want someone special to celebrate their marriage can get someone special to celebrate their marriage. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 870, a bill to amend and reenact Section 8.01243 of the Code of Virginia relating to statute of limitations, sexual abuse, reported from Courts of Justice.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Warren.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, House Bill 870 eliminates an arbitrary distinction regarding the, cause of action from sexual abuse. Current law requires that causes of action for sexual abuse, if it's a minor or incapacitated person, occur within 20 years of the time that action accrues, and for adults, it's two years. So this arbitrary distinction could turn in a matter of hours or days, and House Bill 870 makes it consistent with minors and adults and puts the statute of limitations at 20 years. It's my hope that the House would engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 880, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 16.1253.1 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to protective orders, motions to dissolve filed by petitioner, ex parte hearings, and issuance of order, reported from Courts of Justice with substitute.
The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Simons.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 880 is a court efficiency bill. The bill intends to make it easier for a petitioner to dissolve a protective order expeditiously. It was brought to me by Legal Advocates for Women, who want to give women more control over their own legal process. I would ask that we approve the bill and move it on to its third reading.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to.
Page 21, House Bill 928, a bill to permit the Chesterfield County School Board to establish a regional recovery high school, reported from Education and reported from Appropriations with amendment.
The delegate from Chesterfield, Delegate Koiner.
Madam Speaker, move the amendment.
Shall the amendment be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the amendment is agreed to. Delegate Koiner.
Madam Speaker, according to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services, 341,000 young people between the ages of 12 and 17 enter rehab each year for substance abuse. Of those children, eight out of 10 who returned to previous school relapse within one year. This bill will set up our first pilot for a regional recovery high school for students in their early stages. pilot for a regional recovery high school for students in their early stages of recovery in need of a safe place to not only receive treatment for their substance abuse for long-term sobriety, but also continue pursuing their academic goals. Right now, families are faced with a choice of sobriety or academics, and right now, recovery is not winning the battle with our young people. I would ask that this be engrossed and moved on to its third reading.
Page 22, House Bill 1002, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 3.2, 303, and 3.2, 304 of the Code of Virginia, and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Chapter 3.1 of Title 3.2, a section numbered 3.2, 310, relating to Agriculture and Forestry Industries Development Planning Grant Program, reported from Agriculture, Chesapeake, and Natural Resources, and reported from appropriation.
The delegate from Prince William, delegate Guzman.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 1002 would amend the Governor's Agriculture and Forestry Industries Development Fund Law by adding a new section establishing the Agriculture and Forestry Industries Development, AFEED Planning Grant Program. The program would allow the governor to award grant money from the AFEED fund specifically to the AFEED Planning Grant Fund. This grant program will fill the critical need for localities to advance their agriculture and forestry industries and support local Virginia producers. This grant already exists and has been funded for the past few years. We are codifying it to simplify how the grants are awarded. And I hope it is the will of this body to pass this bill and engross it into its third reading.
House Bill 1023, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 19.2, 390.04 relating to custodial interrogations recording, reported from courts of justice with amendments.
The delegate from Pennsylvania, delegate Adams.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendments.
Shall the amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the amendments are agreed to. Delegate Adams.
House Bill 1023 will require any law enforcement officer to make an audiovisual recording of any custodial interrogation, subject to certain conditions. The bill comes on the recommendation of the Virginia Criminal Justice Conference. I move we engross it and pass it to its third reading.
Page 23 of the calendar, House Bill 1082 has been moved to the regular calendar. House Bill 1182, a bill to amend and reenact Section 16.1, 279.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to protective orders, family abuse, restitution, temporary spousal support, reported from courts of justice with substitute.
The delegate from Fairfax, delegate Watts.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Watts.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 1182 substitute clarifies that when the judge orders in the protective order, any items that might protect the family, that it is financial support would not be limited just to the specific items that are noted in what has become a Christmas tree, such as the motor vehicle in residence. But it clarifies that the court may order financial support or other relief necessary for the production or well-being. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill, pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 1222, a bill to amend and reenact Section 47.1-2 of the Code of Virginia relating to notaries, satisfactory evidence of identity, persons residing in nursing homes or assisted living facilities, reported from courts of justice.
The delegate from Fairfax, delegate Tran.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. Speaking to the bill.
Delegate Tran, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, House Bill 1222 allows individuals living in nursing homes and assisted living facilities to use expired identification documents to notarize documents. Currently, if someone doesn't have a current ID to notarize their documents, they must have two people attest to their identification. This is difficult for those living in nursing homes and assisted living facilities, including senior citizens and people living with disabilities, as it poses a real barrier to getting important documents such as powers of attorney, wills, and real estate transactions notarized. And this bill will help address those issues. Thank you. I hope it is the pleasure of the body to engross and pass this bill on to its third reading.
Page 24, House Bill 1247, a bill to create a six-year capital outlay plan for projects to be funded entirely or partially from general fund-supported resources, and to repeal Chapters 715 and 722 of the Acts of Assembly of 2017, reported from appropriations with substitute.
The delegate from Prince William, delegate Torian.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Torian.
Madam Speaker, the capital improvement plan is the basis for the capital appropriations submitted by the governor to the General Assembly. The amendment and the nature of the substitute makes technical changes to the priorities and project titles to reflect current agency project priorities. It also contains projects that reflect the priorities of the House members as well. I hope that it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 1324, a bill to amend and reenact Section 16.1, 260 of the Code of Virginia relating to juvenile and domestic relations district court intake, reported from courts of justice.
The delegate from Prince William, delegate Carol Foy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise speaking to the bill.
Delegate Carol Foy.
Thank you. This bill extends diversion period for truancy by 30 days, making it equal to all other offenses. Additionally, House Bill 1324 states that any subsequent complaint alleging that a juvenile is in need of supervision or delinquent may result in the filing of a petition, and adds possession of alcohol alongside the existing offense of possession of marijuana, for which, if charged by a summons, the juvenile is entitled to have the charge referred to intake for consideration for informal proceedings. This bill was recommended by the Department of Juvenile Justice and is backed by the administration. I urge the body to engross this bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 1330, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 18.2, 374.1, and 18.2, 374.1:1 of the Code of Virginia relating to possession, distribution, production, publication, sale, financing, et cetera, of child pornography venue, reported from courts of justice with substitute.
The delegate from Bedford, delegate Byron.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Byron.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill comes from the Internet Crimes Against Children. You know, most child pornography that used to arise from computers now comes from cellphones. And this creates a new venue that will allow for prosecution of child pornography possession, distribution, or production in the jurisdiction where the alleged offender arises, which helps in cases where we're dealing with the cloud and trying to determine what the IP address is. So I hope it be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page 25, House Bill 1336, a bill to amend and reenact Section 22.1, 207.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to family life education, standards of learning, and curriculum guidelines, contemporary community standards review, reported from education with amendments.
The delegate from Fairfax, delegate Keem.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendments, please.
Shall the amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate Keem.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, the family life education is a standard of learning, and it's a curriculum for schools. But unlike other standards of learnings that we do, there's not an automatic period by which it has to be reviewed by the Department of Education. The rest of the standards of learnings are required by code to be reviewed on a seven-year basis or less, a minimum of seven years. So we thought it would make sense to have a consistency. So this would automatically just require that standard of learning curriculum also include family life education on a seven-year basis. And to make sure that they do it the proper way, we just asked that the Board of Education convene a stakeholder to help them with this process. I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page 25, House Bill 1361 has been moved to the regular calendar. Page 26, House Bill 1376, a bill to amend and reenact Section 15.2, 5431.10 of the Code of Virginia relating to Virginia Wireless Service Authority Act, reported from Communications, Technology, and Innovation.
The delegate from Baton Rouge, delegate Austin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, House Bill 1361 provides that a board established under the Virginia Wireless Service Authority Act may contain either five or seven members, rather than five members as required under law. I would ask that the bill be engrossed and moved to its third reading.
House Bill 1401, a bill to amend and reenact Section 55.1, 1243 of the Code of Virginia relating to landlord and tenant, remedy for unlawful ouster, ex parte issuance of order to recover possession, reported from courts of justice with amendments.
The delegate from Virginia Beach, delegate Askew.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate Askew.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Currently, Virginia law does not allow for self-help evictions, of which are evictions conducted by a landlord without a court order. Unlawful self-help evictions can involve changing the locks to the tenant's door or cutting off her water or electricity. My bill clarifies the law and provides for uniformity, noting that a judge may issue an ex parte order providing relief to a tenant who has been unlawfully evicted. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page 27, House Bill 1437, a bill to amend and reenact Section 16.1, 292 of the Code of Virginia relating to juvenile confinement for violation of court order, reported from courts of justice.
The delegate from Norfolk, delegate Jones.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 1437 reduces from 10 days to seven days the maximum allowable period of confinement for a juvenile in a secure facility for contempt violation, or when a child in need of supervision is found to have willfully and materially violated an order of the court. Hope it is the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
On page 27, House Bill 1498 has been moved to the regular calendar. House Bill 1597 has been moved to the regular calendar. Page 28, House Bill 1725, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 15.2, 1638.1 relating to judicial assistance, reported from courts of justice.
The delegate from Smith, delegate Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 1725 is a very simple proposition to clarify in the code that the circuit judges, judicial assistants, or secretaries that are sometime known serve at their sole pleasure and under their sole supervision. This will clarify some confusion in some localities where they believe that those individuals are actually employees of the boards of supervisors because they pay their salaries. This was vetted by the House Courts of Justice Committee and received the unanimous 20-to-nothing vote. And as we all know, 20 concurring lawyers can't be wrong. I hope it be the will of the House to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Shall the bills be?
Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Bedford, delegate Byron.
Yes, could House Bill 928 go to the regular calendar after engrossment is on page 21?
HB 920, shall HB 928 be moved?
House Bill 928 will be moved to the regular calendar after engrossment.
Shall the bills be engrossed and passed on to their third reading? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the bills are engrossed and passed on to their third reading.
House Bill's on second reading, regular calendar. Page 28, House Bill 630, a bill to amend and reenact Section 2.2, 422 of the Code of Virginia, and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Chapter 13.1 of Title 30, a section numbered 30-129.7 related to registered lobbyists' sexual harassment training, reported from general laws with amendments.
The delegate from Montgomery, delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like for the House to reject the committee amendments, and I'd like to speak to that motion.
Shall the, shall the committee, no, actually, delegate Hurst, you have the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen of the House, the committee adopted amendments for House Bill 630 to include credentialed members of the press to be required to take sexual harassment training to get their credential. There were several members of this body who were concerned about possible constitutional issues. And in order to try and make sure that the original intent of the bill is achieved, I would hope that we could reject the committee amendments and get the bill back in its original posture.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendments are rejected. Delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, and thank you, colleagues, for your assistance in that. House Bill 630 seeks to make sure that there's a level playing field for many of us who share this similar workplace. Lobbyists are here with us every single day, and now that we are required to undergo sexual harassment training, it is my belief, and hopefully the will of this body, that they all take the same sexual harassment training that we and our staffs have to undergo. Six other states, including California, Georgia, Illinois, Maine, Maryland, and Utah, have recently passed similar laws that require lobbyists to take sexual assault training. And the framework for this bill already exists. They would undergo the same training that everyone else does at no additional cost to the Commonwealth. Both the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office and the House Clerk's Office have shared they don't anticipate a fiscal impact. And just by way of argument, thinking that this is trying to target any one particular group or person, but that women in the lobbying industry have also been subject to sexual harassment and inappropriate comments from members and legislative staff across the Commonwealth and the country for years. So this is also seeking to try and protect lobbyists, to let them know what their abilities are to report complaints properly in this workplace, just as we all now with this new training that was passed into law a couple of years ago, know what our remedies are. So I hope it be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 29, House Bill 789, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 6.2, 303, and many other sections of the Code of Virginia, and to repeal Sections 6.2, 1818 relating to open-end credit plans, payday lenders and short-term loans, consumer finance loans, car title lending, Fairness in Lending Act, reported from Labor and Commerce with substitute. And there is, there are floor amendments.
Delegate from Monarico, delegate Bagby.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would move adoption of the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Bagby.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move adoption of the floor amendments. These technical amendments came at the suggestion of enrolling, the enrolling offices. The closed section is referencing the body of the bill, but was inadvertently admitted from the substitute. Madam Speaker, I move adoption of the floor amendments.
Will the clerk please report the floor amendments?
Floor amendments offered by delegate Bagby to House Bill 789. Amendment 1, line 8, committee sub, title after 6.2, 1509, insert 6.2, 1517. Amendment 2, line 12, committee sub, title after 6.2, 1523.2, strike 6.2, 1532.3, insert 6.2, 1523.3. Amendment 3, line 15, committee sub, title after lending, strike, semicolon, Fairness in Lending Act. Amendment 4, line 17, committee sub, title after 16.2, 1509, insert 6.2, 1517. Amendment 5, line 22, committee sub, title after 6.2, 1523.2, strike 6.2, 1532.3, insert 6.2, 1523.3. Amendment 6, at the beginning of lines 1771, committee sub, strike all of line 1771.
Delegate Bagby.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm sorry, clerk. Madam Speaker, members of the body, House Bill 789 comprehensively reforms small business lending practices, but still, small loan lending practices, but still ensures widespread access to affordable credit. This legislation addresses all of it, payday lending, title lending, online lending, consumer finance, and open credit loans. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
All those in favor of the floor amendments say aye. All those opposed, floor amendments are agreed to. Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading?
Madam Speaker.
Yes, delegate Weber.
I apologize. Would the delegate yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield? Delegate Weber.
Yes. All right. I would ask the gentleman, because I sat in the committee, and when the substitute was given to us, I guess my question is, it says it completely revamps it. For the members that were not in committee, how does it completely revamp the short, the small lending revamp the short, uh, the small lending, whatever vernacular we use to, to describe the short-term loans?
Delegate Bagby.
Madam Speaker, is he--is the gentleman asking me if, uh, how does the substitute change the bill?
Delegate Weber. Would you like to clarify?
Well, no, to clarify, so the gentleman said that, um, it revamps our lending system. Exactly how does it do that? So--
Oh.
Delegate Bagby.
Yeah, sorry.
Sure. The primary thing is, is it sets them all at 36%. Uh, it puts them all on the, uh, sort of same, uh, uh, they all have the same rates, uh, and all of them have the same opportunities to loan. Uh, one of the things that we also have is online lending, and, uh, online lending will continue. Uh, car title loan will continue. All of them will, will have the 36% cap with, with fees, uh, associated with them, but, uh, individuals will not, uh, have those interest rates that are, uh, far above, and individuals also will not have, um, uh, these balloon payments at the end.
Delegate Weber, do you--
Yes, will the gentleman of us, uh, will the gentleman yield for another question?
Will the delegate, will the delegate yield?
I'll yield.
Delegate will yield. Delegate Weber.
Um, during the course of the test, or the, the presentation of, of the bill, um, there was a, basically a new sort of business model, at least that's how I took it, that was presented in the bill called Access Partners. How exactly does that work for the benefit of the members here?
Delegate Bagby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the best way for me to, to, to share that would be to give an example. Uh, and particularly, we oftentimes hear about, um, food deserts, but they're also, where oftentimes where there's food deserts, there's also, uh, places that don't have banks. Uh, and so, uh, there are locations that have either a grocery store or convenience store, they may have an opportunity or some space where individuals could go to, uh, a space in that building without having to have bricks and mortar just for the bank, uh, where individuals could go and, and request for a small loan. Those individuals will not approve the loan, those individuals will just be, uh, the, the individuals that will pass along that information to the financial institution.
Delegate Weber.
Would the gentleman yield for another question?
Will the delegate yield?
I'll yield.
Delegate yields. Whenever we enact new policies, these policies are, are put in place in, in other states, because, I mean, frankly, we steal ideas from other states all the time. Um, where was, uh, is there another place where Access Partners was first introduced, and, and how well did it do?
Well--
Delegate Bagby.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. I'm not sure where it was first introduced. I know there's a number of places across the, the country where they, where they exist, uh, and I, from my understanding, they have, uh, performed fairly well, or rather well. Uh, one of the things that I want to, uh, point out is, and we've heard it time and time again, particularly in, uh, committee, is that we are going to run individuals out of business, uh, in the Commonwealth. I don't think that will be true. It's been proven in places like Ohio that that will not be true. Uh, there are a number of individuals that lined up at, at the committee meeting that shared that they will ha--they have different, uh, business models in which they will be interested in coming, uh, to the Commonwealth to provide these loans. One of the other things we oftentimes hear, uh, is that, why aren't they here already? Uh, and they, they just don't have a desire to, uh, prey upon people in that fashion. And so what, what will happen is, those individuals will come in, uh, and provide those loans. Again, also, what we have is, well, why, uh, why is, we're compared to other, other states, and, and they say, why aren't we doing the same thing as other states? And the only reason why we have these high interest rates is because we let them do it. Uh, and so, once we bring these rates down, I am very confident that any individuals that need to have a small loan, uh, for, for an emergency such as a doctor's, uh, visit or, um, a mechanic visit or anything else, uh, will be afforded the opportunity, uh, under this legislation.
Delegate Weber.
I thank the gentleman.
The delegate from Bedford, delegate Byron.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would the gentleman rise for a question?
Yes, I'll rise for one additional question.
Delegate will yield.
Just one, so should I combine it then, if I'm doing that? Um, I, I hope you'll answer more than one. This is a pretty comprehensive bill. I just have a couple of things that I'm just still uncertain of. One relating to the, the question on the Access Partners. Um, we, we were talking about this a little bit in the committee, and I asked about it, and I'm still a little bit confused. They mentioned something about, it was a model that came out of California, but it sounds like brokers. I'm still trying to figure out how they work, and the bill actually, we talk about, um, brokers, we-- brokers are prohibited in the bill, lines 494 on down. So if they're not a broker, can you explain better what they are? An Access Partner sounds like a broker.
Delegate Bagby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. They are not brokers. They are individuals that will actually pass the information along, uh, and, and there are other instances where we see that, uh, at grocery stores where, uh, you go in and you apply for something, but those individuals that are in the space where you are, aren't the individuals that make the decision, nor do they negotiate the deal. They are just simply the individuals that pass on the information. I'll yield for another question.
With the gentleman yield. Delegate yields.
Thank you. Um, and I appreciate that. So they're not getting paid in any, there's no financial arrangement if they're not brokers then? There's no, they're no, not getting any money for that?
Madam Speaker--
Delegate Bagby.
There is some, uh, there will, uh, potentially be some financial gain for those individuals because in lieu of, uh, the individuals that will be providing the loan, the financial institution, that individual, uh, would be providing space, uh, to, uh, to pass that, um, credit information on to, uh, the, the financial institution.
Delegate Byron.
Further question. Um, there was another section that I didn't get to read while we were going through this with the substitute, and that was on line 571, dealing with the loan database. Um, could you tell me a little bit more about the, um, income verification database and how that would work?
Will the delegate yield?
Madam Chair, um, I, I don't really understand which part of that she has a question with. I will say that I, the, um, minority leader asked me, uh, to let this bill go back for a day so individuals could read the bill and ask questions to a, a number of individuals that had been walking the, the, these halls to give information and answer questions. I had not had a call from, uh, delegate, delegate Byron, uh, about any of these issues, and I'm, um, a little puzzled while these come up now when I told the, the minority leader that I will answer any question that any member had for me, and I did not, he asked me to afford to go back for a day. I, I went, let it go back for two days. And so with that, uh, Madam, um, Madam, um, Speaker, uh, I will sit down and if she intends to speak, uh, to the bill--
Thank you, Delegate Bagby.
I thank the gentleman.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor--
Madam Speaker, I must speak like--
Uh, delegate from Scott, delegate Kilgore.
Speak to the bill.
Delegate Kilgore, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, I applaud the gentleman from Richmond's work on, uh, this complicated, uh, piece of legislation. This is a very complicated area in the Virginia Code as it relates to payday loans, title loans, uh, internet loans, and over the past few years, uh, we have regulated this community. We brought the folks together to try to, uh, come up with agreements to, uh, regulate this area while providing access for those who needed, uh, to borrow money, uh, on these type of high-risk loans that have no collateral. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, what this bill's going to do, they've done the same thing in Ohio, these are going to close, make no mistake about it, these are going to close all those neighborhood, all those loan opportunities in each of your neighborhoods. Uh, they're going to lose, you're going to lose all the employees there. You're going to lose also the rent money, the tax money that goes to your local, uh, local, uh, counties, your local towns, all that's going to be gone, and all this, all this is going to be pushed to the unregulated internet market. You can go online right now, overs, to overseas markets on your computer and borrow money, and that's what's going to happen by passing this. Uh, it's happened in Ohio, it's happened in other states, so I just want you to be careful what you're, uh, voting for here because we've tried to regulate this while keeping these places going, while keeping, uh, uh, some of these, uh, uh, regulated, uh, entities moving toward, uh, and allowing them to rent, uh, allowing them to pay rent, allowing them to, uh, employ people in your neighborhood. So we've been trying to work on that and still allow, uh, loans to happen. Uh, folks, uh, people with, uh, credits such as this are not going to have anywhere to borrow money. Your banks are not going to do it, and that's why that, uh, these, uh, type of entities have popped up. So just be careful as you're voting for these because you are going to hurt those people who you're trying to help. Thank you.
Delegate from Richmond City, delegate Born.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaking to the bill.
Delegate Born, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, um, we have heard a lot about not only this bill but other bills, uh, since we came into session that are quote-unquote "complicated." Um, the level of complication in which bills become complicated seems to have changed, and I will submit to this body right now that this bill is absolutely dense. It does a lot of things, and a lot of good things. What we are trying to do here, what delegate, the delegate from Henrico is trying to do here is to regulate an industry that is preyed upon people who are in emergent circumstances, people who are poor, people who have nowhere else to turn. And what happens when these people are going to get credit is that they are faced with a situation of taking this loan with upwards of 200, 300% interest to navigate life. And so if you are okay with allowing companies to do that, then you should vote no on the bill. But if you want to protect consumers, protect the people that you represent from being preyed upon by predatory lenders, then I ask and urge each and every one of us to engross the bill today and vote green tomorrow.
The delegate from Henrico, delegate Bagby.
Uh, Madam Speaker, I just want to address one thing--
Delegate Bagby.
--because, uh, delegate Born, uh, asked a question in subcommittee, uh, to individuals that were standing in line, uh, in opposition of the bill that had the same threat as, uh, my good friend, delegate Kilgore, had of businesses leaving the Commonwealth. And the question was, the individuals that were threatening that their, their business would leave the Commonwealth, does your business operate in Ohio? It took a long time for them to give a straight answer, but the answer was yes. And so the only reason, the only reason that they're preying upon Virginians is because we allow it.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 29, House Bill 150, a bill to amend and reenact Section 15.2907.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to derelict residential buildings, civil penalty, reported from county cities and towns, and there is a floor amendment. There are floor amendments.
The delegate, delegate from Fairfax, delegate Samira.
I move the amendment.
Will the clerk please report the floor amendments?
Floor amendment to House Bill 150, offered by delegate Leffwitch, to the introduced bill. Amendment 1, line 37, introduced after exceeding, strike, $1,000, insert $500. Amendment 2, line 38, introduced after section, insert, semicolon, however, the total civil penalty imposed shall not exceed the cost to demolish the derelict building.
Delegate Leffwitch.
Madam Speaker, uh, speaking to the amendment.
Delegate Leffwitch, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of the body, uh, first, before I explain the amendment, I want to give credit to my, the gentleman for, uh, proposing or bringing the amendment language to me. It arose out of a conversation we had in subcommittee. It managed to get through full committee because he wasn't there, and he tracked me down and said, hey, we, I want you to introduce this on the floor, and so I, we give him credit for following through on that and his integrity, uh, in this matter. Uh, so essentially, the original bill would have allowed a locality to fine, um, an owner of a derelict property $1,000 a month forever and ever and ever and ever. And so, um, what we discussed in subcommittee was is that there needs to be some type of cap and maybe moderate the monthly fee, and so this amendment would be $500 a month and would not exceed the cost of demolition. And so that's what the amendment does, and I thank the gentleman again for, for following through on his word.
All those in, delegate Samira, all those in favor of the floor amendments say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the floor amendments have been adopted. Delegate Samira.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, members of the General Assembly, uh, this bill is to allow county, cities, and towns to impose a fine on derelict housing. Localities currently do not have the power to impose a civil fine on housing that meet the state's definition of derelict. That, this makes it harder for localities to effectively address vacant housing units, often in Virginia's smaller cities and rural areas that contribute to a shortage of available, affordable housing. Uh, to meet that current requirement of derelict properties must be vacant, boarded up in accordance with the building code, disconnected from utilities, meet these conditions for six months. Uh, after these conditions are met for six months, the localities must send an official notice to the property owner requesting a plan to either rectify or demolish the derelict structure. If this plan is not submitted within three months, the window is closed on the property owner. Under this bill, county, cities, and towns would have the option to levy a fine of up to, now with the amendment, $500 per month on residential properties that fail to submit a plan to address property conditions within 90 days of notification. The fees levied would not be, uh, greater than the cost of destruction, uh, of the, uh, structures. Uh, this would apply to residential properties only. The funds from any such civil, civil penalties can be allocated to the treasury of the locality that imposes the fine, which would allow localities to use that money for tackling homelessness and affordable housing supply if they so desire. And I move to engross.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 15, a bill to amend and reenact Section 22.1177 of the Code of Virginia relating to public school buses' seat belts, reported from Education.
Delegate from Fairfax, delegate Kriesig.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, members of the House, I see this bill's not complicated. So before you today, I have HB 15 that requires that each new school, public school bus purchased for transportation of our students be equipped with seat belts in each school bus by July 1, 2038. Let me just mention that Dominion's new electric school buses are going to have these, have these safety features. Uh, Henrico County's putting them in, and many parochial schools and private schools have seat belts in their school buses. And it's also recommended by the National Transportation Safety Board. The ultimate goal, of course, of this legislation is to save lives and protect our children as they travel to and from school. We need to be proactive instead of waiting for a fatal bus accident. I hope that's the will of the body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 30, House Bill 100, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 19.2262.01 relating to voir dire examination of persons called as jurors, criminal case, reported from courts of justice with substitute.
The delegate from Norfolk, delegate Lindsay.
Madam Speaker, move the substitutes.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Lindsay.
Madam Speaker, this particular measure puts the criminal code as it relates to, uh, criminal jury voir dire online with, with the civil processes that are presently in place. Voir dire is that process whereby, uh, jurors are examined about biases and, and their determination for fitness to serve is, is then determined. This bill now lets them know the particulars of the sentence that would be required to be imposed in the event that the individual was, was found guilty of the offense for which he or she is charged. There are only six states, uh, in the United States that allow both jury determination of guilt and innocent and jury sentencing. Virginia is one of them. Virginia is the only one of the 50 states that does not, up until now, give an opportunity for jury members to understand what particular sentence that they may be called upon to impose. Uh, this bill now makes that change. I hope that will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to the third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 30, House Bill 134 has gone by for the day. House Bill 145, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 22.123.3 relating to public elementary and secondary schools' treatment of transgender students policies, reported from Education-- policies, reported from education.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, member, Madam Speaker, member of the, members of the House, I'll slow down for a second. House Bill 145 requires the Department of Education to develop and make available to each school board no later than December 31, 2020, model policies concerning the treatment of transgender students in public elementary and secondary schools that address common issues regarding transgender students in accordance with evidence-based best practices. And those policies will include information on guidance, procedures, and standards relating to compliance with applicable non-discrimination laws, maintenance of a safe and supportive learning environment free from discrimination and harassment for all students, prevention and response to bullying and harassment, maintenance of student records, identification of students, protections of student privacy, enforcement of sex-based dress codes, and student participation in sex-specific school activities, events, and athletics, and the use of school facilities. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 31, House Bill 256, a bill to amend and reenact Section 18.2415 of the Code of Virginia relating to disorderly conduct, students, reported from courts of justice with substitute.
The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Mullin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Mullin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill. So right now, we have found in Virginia that we are experiencing a growing school-to-prison pipeline. What that means is that things, when we were in school, that would have been disciplined by a principal, by a teacher, or a parent, are now being brought to my courtroom in JDR. That's unacceptable. It brings students who just need help when they are being a pain. It gives them, it really ruins lives. So HB 256 says that a student who is in school cannot be charged with disorderly conduct, which is the charge that you normally charge when, when you have no other charge. And so what this says is that when you are at a school activity, when you're on school property or a school bus, you would not be charged with disorderly conduct. Madam Speaker, I would ask that the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 31, House Bill 375, a bill to amend and reenact Section 23.1230 of the Code of Virginia relating to post-secondary schools' enrollment agreements, disputes, arbitration, reported from education with substitute.
The delegate from Henrico, Delegate Willet.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Willet.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Willet, you have the floor.
HB 375 would allow students enrolled in for-profit secondary institutions to report disputes to an outside entity before submitting to forced arbitration. This bill increases transparency by requiring those institutions to report to the State Council on Higher Education in Virginia, CHEV, as well as its own students, the number and frequency of arbitration disputes that the institution is engaged in. And it also provides information on what the arbitration is. I hope that it's the will of this body to engross this bill and pass it on to the third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
On page 31, House Bill 524 has been referred to Committee on Appropriations. Page 32, House Bill 634, a bill to amend and reenact Section 22.1253.13:3 of the Code of Virginia and to amend the code by adding an Article 1.5 of Chapter 13 of Title 22.1, a section numbered 22.1212.33 relating to school divisions of innovation, performance-based assessments, reported from education and reported from appropriations with amendment.
The delegate from Loudoun, Delegate LaRocque.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendment.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the committee amendment is agreed to. Delegate LaRocque.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill, House Bill 634, will allow a school division to be designated by the State Board of Education as a school division of innovation to apply to the State Board of Education for permission to use performance-based assessments in lieu of SOL tests for the fourth and eighth grade SOLs in Virginia Studies and Civics and Economics. Madam Speaker, I move that the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 33, House Bill 719, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 2.2608 and 34.4:1 of the Code of Virginia and to amend the code by adding a section numbered 2.2608.1 relating to administration of government, general provisions, state publications to be made available in electronic format, reported from communications, technology, and innovation.
The delegate from Loudoun, Delegate Reed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, House Bill 719 is a paperwork reduction and cost savings measure. House Bill 719 requires state agencies to public, to publish publications to legislators in a digital text searchable format rather than in print. Agencies will still distribute print copies by request. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third? Does the delegate have committee amendments?
Yes, Madam, I didn't see them up here, but I would, I would move that we accept
The House will come to order. Will the clerk please report the committee amendments?
Committee amendments were not showing up on the system, so I will read them. Amendments proposed by House Communications, Technology, and Innovation Committee. Amendment 1, line 37, introduced after read-only, insert, and text searchable. Amendment 2, line 38, introduced after read-only, insert, and text searchable. Amendment number 3, line 42, introduced after read-only, insert, and text searchable. Amendment number 4, line 43, introduced after read-only, insert, and text searchable. Amendment number 5, line 52, introduced after read-only, insert, and text searchable. Amendment number 6, line 53, introduced after read-only, insert, and text searchable.
Delegate Reed.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate Reed.
Madam Speaker, I now move that the bill be engrossed and moved on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 34, House Bill 744, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 16.1272 of the Code of Virginia relating to sentencing of juvenile tried as adult.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Watts.
Reported from courts of justice with amendments.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendment.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendment is agreed to. Delegate Watts.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The, excuse me, this code section provides discretion to the judges once a juvenile has been convicted as an adult of having discretion in the sentencing. This closes the one area that the judge does not have discretion. He may, he may, under current law, either sentence as a juvenile, he may sentence, he may use suspended sentence, but the one thing that the judge cannot do is that he must go forward with any mandatory minimum. What HB 744 does is allow the judge to have the same discretion when it comes to whether or not the judge will apply the mandatory minimum, giving him then that full discretion of looking at the juvenile and the offense for which the juvenile has been convicted. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross SB 444 and pass it on to its third
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading?
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Delegate Weber.
Would the delegate yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
Madam Speaker, I yield.
The delegate yields.
The delegate had mentioned mandatory minimums. What kind of offenses are we talking about in regards to the mandatory minimums that the judge may, you know, not apply?
Madam Speaker, I would say to the gentleman, just as current code gives the judge discretion in any of the offenses over the other application of sentencing alternatives, this would apply to mandatory minimums wherever they would possibly apply. But in no way does it direct the judge to not give the mandatory minimum. It simply gives the judge the discretion which the judge does not currently have about applying the mandatory minimum.
I thank the delegate.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 35, House Bill 753, a bill to amend and reenact Section 22.1253.13:1 of the Code of Virginia relating to the standards of learning, social, emotional learning and development, reported from education with amendment and reported from appropriations with substitute.
The delegate from Roanoke City, Delegate Rasool.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, I would like to reject the House Committee on Education's amendments.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
No.
The committee amendment is rejected.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Next, I would like to accept the committee substitute from appropriations.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Rasool.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 753 sets out to have the Department of Education establish social and emotional learning standards. For the first time this year, Madam Speaker, we are screening our kindergarteners coming into our schools for their social and emotional readiness. It's important for them to be able to work well in teams, manage and recognize their emotions. Many of you know I've been trying to work on that with my seatmate over here. So we know this is a critical part in working well as a team. I hope it would be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 817, a bill to require the Department of Education in collaboration with the Department of Health and Medical Professional Societies to develop and implement health and safety best practice guidelines for the use of digital devices in public schools, reported from communications, technology, and innovation with an amendment, which is not showing on your system, so I'll read the amendment.
Delegate from Arlington, Delegate Hope.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendments.
The clerk shall report the committee amendments.
Amendment proposed by Communications, Technology, and Innovation Committee, line 15, introduced after peer-reviewed, strike, the period, insert, a comma.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This, House Bill 817, requires the Department of Education in collaboration with the Department of Health and Medical Professional Societies to develop and implement health and safety best practice guidelines for the use of digital devices in public schools no later than the 2021-22 school year. It will be a pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
All those in favor of the committee amendments say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to. Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 36, House Bill 913, a bill to amend and reenact Section 23.1808 of the Code of Virginia relating to institutions of higher education, sexual violence policies, immunity from disciplinary action, certain students who make reports, reported from education with substitute.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Helmer.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to.
Madam Speaker, I wanted to thank Delegate Collins for his extensive help in making sure this bill is ready to go. He's helped me craft a floor amendment, and I would, I would move.
Will the clerk report the floor amendment?
Floor amendment to House Bill 913, submitted by Delegate Helmer. Line 20, committee sub after action, strike, the remainder of line 20, all of lines 21 through 23, and through institution on line 24, insert, based on personal consumption of drugs or alcohol where such disclosure is made in conjunction with a good faith report of an act of sexual violence.
Delegate Helmer.
Madam Speaker, I move the floor amendment.
Shall the floor amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the floor amendment is agreed to. Delegate Helmer.
Madam Speaker, one in five women and one in 20 men will experience sexual violence during their time at an institution of higher education. There are many barriers to reporting, including the case that, including that in many cases people are involved in underage drinking or use of drugs. The goal of House Bill 913 is to eliminate barriers to reporting by providing immunity for good faith reports of sexual violence on campus to ensure that we increase reporting and get sexual predators off campus. I hope that it will be the will of this body to move this bill, to move, to pass this bill and engross it. I hope it will be the will of this body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading. Thank you.
Shall the bill? Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 995, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 18.223 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to grand larceny and certain property crimes threshold, reported from courts of justice with substitute.
The delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, the bill in its present posture increases the larceny threshold from the present $500 that was put in place a couple of years ago to now $1,000. All states have, have the delineation, delineation of felony versus misdemeanor offenses. Misdemeanor offenses are considered the more petty of offenses. Felonies are like your rapes, your robberies, your murders, your drug distributions, your drug possessions. This keeps a situation where, where we have a larceny threshold that is more in keeping of the value of property and, and the significance that should be placed on the same. I hope that this matter, this bill would be engrossed and passed on to the third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 37, House Bill 1491 has gone by for the day. Going, returning to page 23, House Bill 1082, a bill to amend and reenact Section 44146.16 of the Code of Virginia relating to emergency services and disaster law, definition of disaster incidents involving cyber systems, reported from communications, technology, and innovation.
The delegate from Chesapeake, Delegate Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 1082 defines cyber incident for the purposes of emergency services and disaster law as an event occurring on the, on, excuse me, Madam Speaker. House Bill 1082 defines cybersecurity for the
House Bill 1082 defines cybersecurity for the purposes of emergency services and disaster law as an event occurring on or conducted through a computer network that actually or imminently jeopardizes the integrity, confidentiality, or availability of computers, information, or communication systems or networks, physical or virtual infrastructure controlled by computers or information systems or information resident thereon. The bill provides that a cyber incident may include a vulnerability in information systems, security procedures, internal controls, or implementations that could be exploited by a threat... by a threat source. I hope it's the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on for its...
Shall the bill be...
Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Culpeper, delegate Freitas.
I apologize, Madam Speaker. Would the delegate yield for a question?
Delegate will yield.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I actually saw this in committee, and I thought we were just changing a definition or adding a definition which looked to be a very necessary addition. The one thing I'm concerned about with this, though, is now it's falling under the powers of the governor to declare a state of emergency, and when I look at the definition, and I look at the definition that we're using for disaster, I mean, that's a pretty broad category. So I was just wondering what the delegate's overall intention was with respect to, you know, potentially expanding the area in which the governor could call a state of emergency with, again, a definition which probably happens every day in the Commonwealth.
Delegate Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, to the delegate, the purpose for this legislation was simply to authorize the governor to declare the state of an emergency in the case of a cyber incident, period.
Madam Speaker, would the delegate yield for another question?
Will the delegate yield?
One more.
Delegate will yield for one last question.
Delegate will yield. Delegate Freitas.
Madam Speaker, the issue that I have with this is that literally the definition of a cyber incident, I think, is accurate, from what I understand, having done some work in cybersecurity. The problem is, is that the incident that is described by this definition, again, probably happens thousands of times a day, every single day in Virginia. The question is, is what limiting principle are we using to tell the governor that you can't declare a state of the emergency, a state of emergency simply because somebody has attempted to hack in to, you know, the computer system that the, you know, Commonwealth of Virginia uses? Like, where is the... where are the parameters that would prevent the governor from calling it a state of emergency right now if this were to pass?
Delegate Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The governor has the authority to declare a state of an emergency under many issues and opportunities even now, and that the governor has that discretion to declare those state of emergencies, and we would certainly hope with the discretion that we'll do the same on the case of cyber incidents.
I think the delegate.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page twenty-five of the calendar. Returning to page twenty-five of the calendar, House Bill 1361, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in title 59.1, a chapter numbered 22.14, consisting of a section numbered 59.1, 284.33, relating to the Truck Manufacturing Grant Fund creation, reported from Appropriations with amendment.
The delegate from Montgomery, delegate Rush.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendment.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendment is agreed to. Delegate Rush.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, members of the House, House Bill 1361 is the companion legislation to a major economic development announcement from last year. In fact, Madam Speaker, this was the largest economic development announcement in the history of rural Virginia. So it's over $400 million and 777 new jobs. I hope it's a pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Returning to page twenty-seven of the calendar, House Bill 1498, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in title 59.1, a chapter numbered 22.14, consisting of sections numbered 59.1, 284.33, and other sections of the code relating to Pharmaceutical Manufacturing Grant Program, reported from Appropriations.
The delegate from Fairfax, delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of the House, HB 1498 is another bill for rural Virginia. It creates the Pharmaceutical Manufacturing Grant Program to make grant payments to an eligible pharmaceutical manufacturer that makes a capital investment of at least $1 billion at a facility in Rockingham County and creates at least 152 new full-time jobs at the facility. The pharmaceutical manufacturer would be eligible for an aggregate of $7.5 million in grants paid out over a three-year period if it meets the performance parameters. The bill also makes available, subject to appropriation, $2.5 million to a comprehensive community college and baccalaureate public institution of higher education in or near Rockingham County to support the workforce development needs of the manufacturer and other research and development companies in the area. So I would hope my colleagues would engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Returning to page twenty-seven of the calendar, House Bill 1597, a bill to amend and reenact Section 2.2, 2489 of the Code of Virginia relating to Go Virginia Grants Matching Funds, reported from Appropriations.
Delegate from Washington, delegate Wampler.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, House Bill 1597 is a bill that allows for economic development grants awarded by the Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission to be matched with grants of the Virginia Growth and Opportunity Fund, also known as Go Virginia. So I hope it would be the will of the body to move this bill to its... engross this bill and move it to its third reading. Thank you.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Resolutions on the uncontested calendar. House Joint Resolution 148 has been passed by till February 6th on the regular calendar. Madam Speaker, that completes the calendar.
Her House Rule 51, the House has returned to the morning hour. Does the clerk have any additional announcements or communications?
I have two announcements before the meeting schedule. One is, again, to remind legislators to file their statement of economic interest, which is due on Monday, February 3rd, and it has to be filed online. And especially for new members, this is a requirement for all members, including new members. Secondly, several of you have asked about staff training for post crossover, and we will be holding staff training on February 12th. We'll send out a notice, but there will be staff training. Meeting schedule for Thursday, January 30th, General Laws Committee meets one half after adjournment, House Room Three. General Laws Subcommittee on Professional Occupations and Administrative Process meets immediately upon adjournment, House Room Three. That's a change in time. Immediately upon adjournment of the full committee, House Room Three. General Laws Subcommittee on Housing Consumer Protection meets two hours after adjournment of the full committee, House Room Three. Also a change in time, two hours after adjournment of the full committee. Labor and Commerce Committee meets one half hour after adjournment of the House, House Committee Room. Labor and Commerce Subcommittee Number Two meets immediately upon adjournment of the full committee, House Committee Room. Labor and Commerce Subcommittee Number Three meets immediately upon adjournment of Subcommittee Number Two, House Committee Room. Health Welfare and Institutions, Health Professions Subcommittee meets 4:00 PM, 400A Subcommittee Room. That's a change in time, 4:00 PM. Privileges and Elections, Campaign Finance Subcommittee, 4:00 PM, 300A Subcommittee Room. Counties, Cities and Towns, Charters Subcommittee, 5:00 PM, 200A Subcommittee Room. Rural Caucus, 5:00 PM, 300B Subcommittee Room. That's a change in date and location. Today, 5:00 PM, 300B Subcommittee Room. Public Safety, Public Safety Subcommittee, 6:00 PM, 400B Subcommittee Room. Meetings for Friday morning, January 31st, Agriculture, Chesapeake and Natural Resources, Natural Resources Subcommittee meets 7:30 AM. This is an additional meeting, 7:30 AM, 400B Subcommittee Room. Finance Subcommittee Number Three, 7:30 AM, House Room One. Public Safety Committee, 8:00 AM, House Committee Room. Counties, Cities and Towns Committee, 9:00 AM, Shared Committee Room. Education, Post-Secondaryary and Higher Ed Subcommittee has been canceled. Privileges and Elections Committee meets 9:30 AM, House Room Three. Democratic Caucus meets at 11:00 AM, House Room One. The Republican Caucus meets 11:00 AM, House Room Two.
The delegate from Campbell, delegate Ferris.
Madam Speaker, I rise for a quick point of personal privilege.
Delegate Ferris.
Madam Chair, Delegate Head and I would like to... we have a chart here, and we talked about earlier, somebody's anniversary was today. And so, in saying that, Delegate Head and I wanted to let the body know that we really love women, and we want y'all to think about that this line is time, and this blue line is speaking with Delegate Watts about what's going on with legislation. And in saying that, we'd like to close in honor of David Watts today for what... for what he's done for the Commonwealth, and we understand that he's had a tough session this year, but we support him. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, I move when the House adjourns today, adjourn to reconvene Friday, January 31st, 2020, at 12 noon.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring moves that when the House adjourn today, adjourn to reconvene tomorrow, Friday, January 31st, 2020, at 12 o'clock noon. As many as favor, that motion will say aye. Those opposed, the motion is agreed to. Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move that the House do now adjourn.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring moves that the House do now adjourn. As many as favor, that motion will say aye. Those opposed, the motion is agreed to. The House stands adjourned until Friday, January 31st, 2020, at noon.